Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for September 14th, 2022, and we're beginning right at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors for tonight's Committee of the Whole? Seeing and hearing none, anything from administration?
Thank you, Worshiping Council. Administration's requesting that council add council/CEO dialogue advice from officials. Void section 24-1A as 7.1. Thank you.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Thank you for that motion. I'll call the question, all in favour. And that motion is carried. This brings us to delegations. 3.1, Marigold Library System. Lyn Price is here with us. We'd like to welcome you officially and congratulate you on your new position as CEO of Marigold Library System. And we look forward to hearing and seeing your presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Fuel and council for providing time for me to speak this evening, and to the Strathmore staff, Jonathan and Chris, for extending the invitation and for setting me up today. So it will not surprise you that I believe library service is the heart of every community. Public libraries provide a safe, inclusive space and are community hubs for learning and literacy and recreation. Your municipality's investment in Marigold membership is good business for your community and residents. Many of you have toured Marigold headquarters, which is a centralized operational hub that works behind the scenes to support public library service. So today, I'll highlight Marigold services and support to demonstrate how being a part of Marigold allows your municipality to provide more to residents than could be accomplished So I would say that for everyone, the last couple of years has definitely brought change, and that includes many positive changes for Marigold. We are so grateful to the town for your support during the building of our new facility with the Western Irrigation District. Your support played a role in helping us continue seamless service during the pandemic, the transition back to working onsite, and our move. So we had no downtime in terms of providing service to our member libraries. So one of the primary services that Marigold provides is centralized purchasing, receiving, and processing of physical library collections. We get more for our dollar by negotiating substantial discounts and free shipping through bulk purchasing. We purchased over 3,000 new items for Strathmore Library last year, and over $1.1 million was spent on brand-new collection materials across the system. So Strathmore cardholders have access to all of that. At headquarters, we receive, order, process materials into a database for patrons to Marigold is a part of the Trac Consortium with three other regional library systems, and as a result, every cardholder in Strathmore has access to 3.2 million items in a shared library collection. Libraries can only fit so many items on shelves, and sharing collections with Trac means not every library has to have everything, which is really efficient and environmentally friendly and cost-effective. So this is what I mean when I say that we can provide more to Strathmore than possibly a municipality could do alone. With the 645,000 eBooks and 154,000 e-audiobooks, those alone would cost, I'd say at a minimum, $5 million to replicate if the collection were built from scratch. We also provide unique collections like pedometers or Fortis power monitors. We've added hundreds of unique items for libraries to share and circulate locally, including telescopes and trekking poles, museum passes, and more. We have also provided large print collections for print-disabled patrons. We actually were providing large print collections to the Wheatland Lodge in collaboration with the Strathmore Library staff, and that was suspended during the pandemic, and I would really like to see that start up again. So we will be reaching out to them. Marigold staff work behind the scenes to ensure services and resources are affordable and sustainable. When a teenager uses Hoopla Digital to download comics, or your dad's looking up how to fix his car on auto repair, this happens because Marigold staff have reviewed and negotiated licensing and contracts. We provide training resources and promotional materials, so library patrons and staff know about the products that we have, but also how to use them. And we provide free apps so cardholders can request, borrow, and download collections and e-resources from anywhere. Our staff serve on vendor and provincial working groups and have a strong voice in identifying areas for improvement, including participation in software development and enhancement. Our collaboration on working groups means more people are making frontline customer service the best it can be for your residents. And as today, we come to you. So we don't sit behind our desks. We have a fleet of seven vehicles to support resource sharing, outreach, programming, project work, and onsite IT support. Our drivers are on the road five days a week to deliver more than 2.3 million interlibrary loans that get sorted through our fabulous sorter at headquarters. We drive 300,000 kilometres each year to transport supplies, kits and games, equipment, and more. Delivery is such an essential service component that we completed a GIS analysis in 2020 to ensure the efficiency of our delivery routes. And we also have greening features embedded in our software that keep physical library items as close to home as possible, so your items fill for your patrons first. And that also helps reduce volume in our vans. Marigold staff assist libraries with project work like inventory, which ensures the items on library shelves are in good condition and topical and relevant. We recycle worn-out books and decommission IT for library staff, which saves them time. We also have a unique traditional service called Library to You. So we mail items requested by patrons to their postbox. Two dozen residents in Strathmore currently receive books, movies, or audiobooks mailed to them from headquarters. We include Canada Post return labels, so your residents don't incur extra costs. So this is, to me, a really small but important original service from 1981, because it ensures equity for homebound and remote patrons. And I think it's clear to everybody that access to technology and digital content has never been so integrated with everyday life. Marigold provides the technology that allows people to interact with the library in the way that they find the most useful and effective, and this is made possible by our secure network infrastructure. So at the library, patrons have access to public computers and wireless networks that connect them with the world at large. These systems are kept safe, secure, and optimized by Marigold IT to ensure users have the most positive experience possible. We provide libraries with centralized system configuration, remote management, collaborative tools, a robust security framework, and shared software packages. Full-service IT support maximizes uptime and minimizes the need for additional staff at the library. We also provide and support the library software, Polaris. This software enables library staff to create and maintain patron accounts, share collections, generate statistics, and manage inventory. And we also provide libraries with full-featured websites and apps. I really like this quote from Rachel, so I thought I would include it in the presentation. But we have three full-time IT staff, and hopefully soon to be four, that provide rapid help desk and onsite support, saving thousands of dollars each year for libraries. IT staff make regular visits to member libraries to update and maintain their equipment. We all know that the risk of cyber attacks for public institutions continues to rise, so all IT services include a strict eye on security and safe access to information. We also provide a comprehensive suite of online resources that patrons can access from their home or really anywhere in the world. And in 2021, 6,519 people or families from Strathmore had Trac cards, which is pretty astounding percentage-wise. There are some of the things, these are some of the things a library cardholder can do with our e-resources. But what I like the most about them, because when I look at that, I think, okay, why couldn't I just look that up on a YouTube video? But this is a credible and safe and ad-free environment, which I think is really great for teens as well as parents. So Marigold creates and provides libraries with programming materials to use in-house, like travelling displays of young adult book awards, giant board games, and craft kits. Candy Sushi is a perennially popular program with teens. We also provide consulting services on the technological needs of the library and help libraries position for ever-changing technologies and trends. We provide a $1,000 technology spending account to Strathmore each year, plus email, file sharing, and centralized backup, Microsoft 365 products, patron printing software, and a toll-free telephone system. We provide support for library managers on completing provincial statistics and reports required by legislation, management and leadership, volunteer stewardship, and human resources. We also provide discounts to member libraries on IT equipment, office supplies, furniture, and processing supplies, and basically any item required for the daily operation of the library. We provide communication and marketing support through professional quality publications, displays, and we also have a software called Libraryware, where libraries can generate their own promotional materials for services and events. So I know that economic development is a very important thing for Strathmore as well as other communities, and we know that libraries contribute to economic development through employment and business activities, and are a draw to residents who are deciding whether or not to move to a different community. So we strive behind the scenes to ensure the experience of Strathmore residents is positive and beneficial and maximizes every dollar invested. And that was everything I wanted to present to you today, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lyn, for your attendance and your presentation. And what I really liked with your final comment was you tied it right into one of our strategic planning sections, which is on Act Dev. So I appreciate that, and the wellness that libraries contribute to. That's one of our strategic items as well. So I've always been so impressed. I was glad to be a part of the library board and go to the Marigold AGMs and different things. But I've always been impressed with the things that the library tries and does that are, you know, it's thinking outside the box and coming up with new things that can be checked out of a library, new programs, things to attract and hold young people's attention. So thank you to Marigold and to all the libraries, especially our own public library here. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Lyn. And it goes without saying, my admiration for Marigold and for you and your group. One of the questions I have is very politically motivated, and I know that in 2017, Strathmore council took a resolution to the province, to the AUMA, advocating that regional libraries should be able to act as statutory groups in the sense that they could then access the same kind of funding from an economic stance that other entities could. Because you now are under the Public Library Services Board auspice, and you can't act in that independent way. So it was a big barrier at the time to finding resources to be able to build the library. One of the things that I'll never forget was that when that motion came to the floor under that particular council that we had at that time, it failed on the floor. But the deputy premier of the time came down and said to me, "What do you mean, libraries can't act independently?" And then shortly thereafter, they sent you a cheque for $3 million, which helped in the build. So my question is, is it still a viable concern that libraries have that designation? Would it be useful? And if it's a conversation for another day, I'm happy with that. But I always think about what the future might bring in terms of, because I don't see you lessening your scope anytime soon. It's going to continue to grow, particularly in the fast-paced world we live in. And there may be additional needs in terms of what we're talking about from an economic perspective.
So in some ways, I think the way that we are legislated and structured helps us, and in others, it's harmful. Because we, one example is with our current headquarters, we are not able to lease that building, because it can only be used for the purposes of a library system, and we are being held to that very specific piece of legislation. So, and at the same time, we are also held at 2016 Municipal Affairs population, which is decided specifically by Municipal Affairs Public Library Services branch. One thing, I don't quite have an answer for you, but what I will say is that since Jasper Conference was suspended a few years ago, that was an Alberta-wide library conference and attracted people from across Canada, but it was an opportunity for us to meet with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and other ministers and advocate for regional library systems. Because that hasn't happened, I feel that's been a very big gap in our visibility with the province, and it would be fantastic for us to try and build in to somebody's platform an advocacy strategy for increasing funding across the province. So the system directors and chairs are meeting October 13th in Lecombe at the Parkland Regional System, and we hope to develop something that we can rule out, not just at the system level, but to each library and raise our voices together. Calgary and Edmonton have expressed their desire for increased funding recently to the minister, but of course, they have, I think, some different needs as large urban systems than some of our smaller communities. So I hope we can find a balance, and I believe that we are stronger when we speak up at the same time.
Stronger together. I think that's a brilliant path forward, and I would strongly encourage you to talk to our CEO. He has some very, very good information around the strength of advocacy and has tremendous experience in that.
Yeah, thank you.
And the last thing I'd like to say, your worship, with regards to Marigold, is that they have acted on the leading edge of bringing library services into the fullness of community in an inclusive way, and I'm very proud of the work that they've done with the Indigenous communities that fall within the realm of Marigold. There are typically three Indigenous communities, and I really believe that, although I know that you don't have enough money, that you haven't done as much as you wanted to do, and that there's been all kinds of challenges, but you have done an amazing amount of work with a very small amount of resource. And I believe that because of the work that you've done, that you've brought a hopefulness to those Indigenous communities, and I really believe that in the next five years, we're going to see libraries in those communities. And it's my fervent hope that they will become a part of the Marigold library system, and I really appreciate what you do in our community and in theirs. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Peterson. I have councillor Langmaiden and then councillor Mitzner.
Thank you, your worship. Lyn, it's good to see you here. I don't think it's a secret to anyone that I'm a big fan of libraries myself, and I'm a big fan of what Marigold does, not only for our community here in Strathmore, but for the entire region that you cover, which is vast. If anyone isn't aware, Marigold covers, now let's see if I can get, Arriestre South? No, we go further northern Arriestre.
Three Hills Consort, all the way to ID9, Lake Louise, to special areas, to the Saskatchewan border, and then south to Longview High River.
Yes, the area that you serve is absolutely massive, which just speaks to the level of impact that you have, not only in our community, but all communities throughout southern Alberta. And I want to recognize you and just say how wonderful the work that you do is. Early when we were first elected to this council, we were invited to come on a tour to the Marigold Library Building. And I can't remember who said this, but it stuck with me since, and it's true, is that the Marigold and libraries aren't afraid to try something and have it not work. You know, you're always open to trying new things, building new programs, and putting it out there to see how people respond. And you know that what works in one community might not work in another. And I think that that's just a beautiful way to operate and just go, you know what? We're going to try and see how it goes, and sometimes things catch, and sometimes things don't. But that creativity and the variety of programming and materials that you bring in is just incredible. Thank you for the work that you do here, and I don't really have any questions for you, I just wanted to talk you up. So thanks so much for being in our community, and I'm really proud to be on the board with you, and Marigold's wonderful. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, councillor Langmaiden. Councillor Mitzner.
I have a question. Do you see our library as being too small right now and needing additional square footage for our present library?
I can't believe that I get the opportunity to answer that question, so thank you for asking. There are standards established by the province as to community size versus the square footage in a library, and I would say that every library that could expand, that has an opportunity to expand, will use the space. I also understand there are financial restrictions and logistical restrictions, just in terms of what facility may be available, or, you know, if you're talking about retrofitting or a new build. Every time, I think libraries need to plan for the next 10 to 20 years, and in that way, from what I see with the growth in Strathmore, that I would recommend that be a consideration to have as a future discussion.
Okay, and can you just expand a bit on where you said there's no lease options for you, where you're at? So what type of leases would you be looking for?
So our only choice is to sell our old facility at 710 Second Street or to use it. We are not allowed to lease it to a third party to generate revenue until we sell it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, or even as a long-term solution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mitzner. Any other questions or comments for Lyn? Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. So just following that line of questioning, so is it possible for a library to go into the Marigold Building?
It is not, because we are closed to the public.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for Lyn? Seeing none. Thank you again very much for your presentation. Best wishes as you move forward with Marigold and your support of rural libraries.
I hope to see all of you in the community cross paths with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that the delegation has presented, and we've had a chance to ask questions and make some positive comments towards Lyn and her group, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on the passing of Queen Elizabeth II. If you're watching from home, I'm not sure if you can see it, but the Queen's portrait has been draped in black, and our flags at the town office are at half-mast, and they will remain at half-mast for the remainder of the mourning period until sunset on September 19th. I think many of us understand and are appreciative that Queen Elizabeth II dedicated her life to public service. She remained active in her duties as a monarch, as our monarch, for over seven decades, and Canada was very dear to her. She travelled across our country several times and met with Canadians to hear our stories. And on behalf of the town of Strathmore, my fellow councillors and the residents of Strathmore, I offer my deepest sympathies to the members of the royal family. And before we get on to the business of tonight's meeting, I would like to take a moment of Thank you. We move now to the confirmation of minutes. Item 4.1, Committee of the Whole meeting minutes for July 13th, 2022. Councillor Langmaiden.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to move that council adopt the July 13th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you for that motion, all in favour. And that motion is carried. We move now to tonight's business. Item 5, 5.1, Traffic Control Bylaw number 22-006. Claudette, welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening. Good evening, councillors. It's been a while. Hope you guys had a good summer. Today, I'm here to present the Traffic Control Bylaw again. I was here last March, Committee of the Whole meeting, and took back some feedback from councillors and made the changes necessary. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Claudette. I had one question about e-bikes, and I'm trying to find it in my notes again. Every person riding a bicycle, e-bicycle, scooter, e-scooter, upon a sidewalk shall yield the right of way to pedestrians. All of this is fine, but I'm just wondering if other communities, maybe even larger communities, are they experiencing difficulties as far as the speed that e-bikes can have, and should they be allowed on sidewalks at all? Have you heard or read anything as far as other communities go? Thank you.
I have not read anything pertaining to that, but I know in larger communities, they do have designated bike lanes, where typically that's where those scooters are used. And when they don't, they are on the sidewalk. I used to work downtown Calgary, and that's what you would see. You'd see them on the sidewalk or in the bicycle lanes. But I can look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from councillors? Councillor Langmaiden.
Thank you, your worship. I have a few, so I'll start with a couple thoughts, and then I'll give someone else a chance before I move on. Just some, I'll start with just some generic thoughts as I was reading through it. And these don't really have much to do with the actual content, but just grammar inconsistency. Things are capitalized in weird places all over the place in the document. So if we can just work on some grammar inconsistency, and I know we have a gender-neutral statement, like this bylaw is gender-neutral, and if we could actually use gender-neutral language, that would be good. There's a couple hymns and hers and himself's in there that I think we can just clean up. The first question that I have is actually about the scooters, and that is, scooter is a term that can kind of mean a few different things. So when I hear scooter, I can think of, I think what's referred to in here is like a moped. As a kid, I called those scooters. Then there's also like the razor scooters that are push, like kids pushing down the road. Then there's mobility scooters and e-scooters. And then what about like, there's a few different things, and as I was reading through the document, I thought, you know, scooter is a bit ambiguous. I think we could probably use a bit more of a definition on that one. And then another question that came out when I reviewed this is around recreational vehicles and trailers. So where I struggled with this was, a trailer is considered a trailer when it's not attached to a vehicle. If the trailer is attached to a vehicle, from what I understand from reading this, it's considered a vehicle. So therefore, a trailer attached to a truck could sit on the road for up to 72 hours as long as it remains attached to the truck. Is that correct?
That's not supposed to be how the bylaws interpreted.
Okay. We might want to look at that then, because it just says, you know, let's see if I can actually find the right section here that I'm looking at. Trailer, yeah, it says, "Shall be subject to the regulations pertaining to vehicles." So that, to me, says that a trailer attached to a truck should be treated just like a vehicle. And then it's also a little confusing, because it says, "No driver shall park any trailer or permit any trailer to be parked upon a highway unless the trailer is attached to a vehicle." And then in 16.3, it says, "An owner or driver of a trailer shall not park a trailer on the highway for more than 24 hours." But in two points before, it says that you can't do it at all. But what if it's attached to a vehicle? And then, you know, why would we have, you know, from an eyesore and inconvenient standpoint, is a truck attached to a trailer any less of a nuisance for other people that are trying to find parking in a community than, say, an RV? You know, a recreational vehicle. It's also long and large and takes up a lot of street space, so I'm not, there seems to be different rules for the three categories, for the two different categories, for trailers and RVs and things, and I think we could just maybe make it a little more clear. Or maybe I've read it wrong, and you can help me understand it better now.
I'll take a look over it. When I read it, I guess in my mind, I know exactly what it's supposed to mean. But if you have questions, everybody's going to have questions, so I can take a look back at that, make sure that the definitions... at that, make sure that the definitions are more clear.
Yeah, it was just that, that section really kind of tripped me up, and I, I, I'm actually not even sure I could tell you what the rule is right now, so if we could look at that section. And then I'll take a, a break here and give someone else an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmaide. Counselor Montgomery?
So many of my points are actually just kind of rehashed of the, when we first kind of reviewed this. So with eight point seven, for instance, section eight point seven, it deals with if there's like a mess left on the road, you know, the town is able to come and clean it up, or if there's a mess left on the sidewalk, you know, dirt or something like that. But eight point seven basically is stating that we do not assume any sort of responsibility, you know, for damage done to anyone's property while we're cleaning up the mess. And the point that I raised last time, and I'll just raise it again, you know, if, if some guy, you know, dumps some dirt in front of my house, and the town comes to clean it up, and then, you know, they crash into my truck, or, you know, they rip up my lawn, I, I'm surprised that we can legally absolve ourselves of, of being responsible for that. And so, and this is what I asked last time, is, can we confirm that we legally can absolve ourselves from damaging somebody's property if they're totally unrelated to the situation? Is that, is that the case?
I would say no. We can take that out of there, out of the bylaw if you wish. It's just when there's debris blocking traffic on the road, the highway, typically, we ask the individual, like, how long it's gonna be there. It's no different than a C can, right, that's parked. If they don't comply, it's up to us then to hire a contractor or our staff to clean it up. Typically, you have that good contractor who isn't in there just to damage your stuff, and if it's damaged, we ask that they would replace it, that's all. I mean, I'm not gonna say, yeah, you can go in and damage it, and it's back on the town for that. I mean, that's kind of disrespectful, and it'd go right back to the company. It's their...
Okay. Like, and if the town hires a contractor, the town is not at all responsible for the damage that would be done by the contractor?
So the contractor bills the property owner for that cleanup if they don't comply to clean it up within a certain period of time.
So they don't bill the town? They would bill the property owner directly?
Well, they, sorry, they bill the town, and then the town sends the landowner, the registered owner, the bill.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I would just, and again, like my, I totally get the part about if somebody leaves a mess and, and, you know, and you give them, you know, ask them to clean it up. I'm, I'm saying that in a situation where somebody's property is damaged, I just, if we, if we can't actually legally absolve ourselves of responsibility, then we probably, you know, shouldn't have it in the bylaw saying we don't assume any sort of responsibility for damage done to people's property while we're doing that.
That would be the contractor to replace the damage that was done.
I'm wondering if I could turn to our CAO, Kevin Scoble, and your experiences with other communities. Is it typical that the municipality would, would not be liable for damages in a situation that's described by Counselor Montgomery, where we're absolved?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the situation, but like, like if it was a town project, and we were doing construction, and a contractor did some damage, in our contract, they would be responsible for it. Okay? And it would typically be covered by insurance, just like if, if we caused damage, it would be caught, covered by insurance as well. So if I heard the example right, and, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but somebody causes a mess on the road, and we go in and clean it up, I mean, if, if, if our backhoe or our skid steer, whatever we're using contacted a resident's vehicle parked there, then that would be handled as any motor vehicle accident, right? It would be administered through insurance and that. And that's kind of what I thought I heard, but I'm, I'm not sure if that's accurate.
Right, and, and so that's, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm confused why we would be stating we don't, you know, assume any responsibility for damage done if, you know, there is a normal process, you know, for if we damage somebody's property. Usually, we would, you know, like you said, go through insurance or have some sort of a process, rather than just saying, you know, tough luck, our bylaw says we're not responsible for damage done while we're cleaning up a mess on the road. And that's, that's what the bylaw is saying, it's saying we're not responsible. And that's, so I'm just, I'm, I, I think either, if that's true, that's fine, then we can leave it in there. I'm just, I'm saying if we are responsible, we should not have that in the bylaw.
Yeah, I think, I'm just trying to understand, because that clause relates back, eight-seven relates back to eight-five, but then that goes back to eight-three and eight-four, so I was trying to, trying to catch up here, so I don't know, Claudette, if you're more versed in those clauses right now.
Your Worship.
Counselor Deputy Mayor Peterson?
That, that's what I, that I think that it's a contextual issue, because I, I think that if you read eight point seven in the context of eight point five and eight point six, then it doesn't read that the town is devoid or is avoiding, you know, it's contextual. They all depend on one another, and it states in eight point seven that, that eight point five and eight point six are relevant, and then eight point five and eight point six reference eight point three and eight point four. So I think when you read it and take it in its entirety, I don't know that the town is absolving themselves of responsibility. I don't think so.
Just where it says that, like, it includes the property that is abutting the highway or sidewalk, so like I said, if, if the mess is on the sidewalk in front of my property, and it's not my fault, therefore, it's, it's not the property that's causing obstruction. I, I just, the way it reads, it's saying that we can, if the mess is in front of your house, even if you're not responsible for it, if any damage occurs while it's being cleaned up, the town assumes no responsibility.
Maybe I could provide a different explanation of, along a pathway. Somebody now has, say, a cement garden bed. It was never permitted to be there. There's no permit for it to be built right on the sidewalk on the town's property. If they take their snow blower there to clear out the path, snow removal, and they scrape that, the town shouldn't be liable to fix that cement flower bed if it wasn't supposed to be there.
Yeah, in that situation, I completely, I, I, yeah, you're right, that, that's just not the way this, like, I, I under, the way I understood this is we was discussing messes left on, on the road or the sidewalk, and, and responsibility for that. I'll, I'll, I'll think about what you guys have said a bit more, and, you know, if it's, if I need more clarification or something like that, I'll bring that forward, I guess.
So closing out, is it fair to say, like, I, I, when I read this, it's, it's damage caused by other parties, and we go in to clean it up? And where, the town is not going to be responsible for the damage from those other parties? If in the course of cleaning that up, we caused some damage, we would accept, we would be accountable for that. Is that, is that fair, Claudette?
That's correct. That's how it's supposed to be written. So if there was damage done by a contractor going in, it would go back to the contractor to fix that damage up. If the town was to do it, I mean, we would fix, we could as well, but we're not gonna assume any liability if the contractor does the damage.
No, legally, if we, if we're the ones hiring the contractor, doesn't that make us kind of the prime contractor in that case?
Yeah, well, it would depend whether we were the prime contractor or not. It would also depend on what the contract documents between the town and the contractor. I mean, normally, it says in there that they're, they're responsible, and they absolve the town of, of any damages they cause. Yeah. That's not to say if there was a lawsuit, the town wouldn't get named as, as a third party. You know, I'll be frank, it's always the deep pockets that get, get named as well, so...
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. And I guess if nobody else wants to go, I'll jump in again. Or do you want to go?
I think I have three, so you can take three.
So the next one is just nine point two, and I, again, I mentioned this one previously, but, so it discusses like signs that, you know, say, for a street cleaning, where it says, you know, "Don't park on this street from, you know, say, September fifteenth to, you know, from eight AM to four PM," or something like that. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this reads, it's saying that you cannot park on the road from the time a sign or signs have been placed and until the sign's been removed. So again, if we put the signs out two days before the street cleaning, the way this reads, in my understanding, is that as soon as the signs are out, regardless of what's on the sign, you cannot park on that road until those signs are gone?
I can make changes to that.
Thank you. And, so, and then the next one is seventeen point two. And it just has to do with somebody parking a recreational vehicle. It says, "An owner or driver of a recreational vehicle shall not park the recreational vehicle on a highway unless it is parked in a location immediately adjoining the recreational vehicle owners or operators' place of residence, as shown in the records of Alberta Registry." So basically, it's saying you cannot park an RV in front of anybody's home but your own. And I think the issue that that creates is that, you know, if I have somebody coming in from out of town, they can't park their mo, like, they literally couldn't, nobody coming in from out of town can park their motorhome anywhere in any residential area, essentially, because they're not the registered owner of the property. I think we should probably have some sort of leeway that, you know, allows people, now obviously not parked over it.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, okay, thank you very much. I missed that part, obviously. Okay, thank you. Then you must have heard me last time, I guess. Okay, and, and the only one that I, I have, of course, is, well, I guess I could, this is gonna be kind of a silly question, of course, but is, do we intend that people should follow this bylaw? Do we intend that people should, should follow this bylaw the way it is written, is my question?
Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, so we have, we have a section, and I'll just, let me just reread this in case I'm, I'm missing something here. Okay, so it says, "No person shall," number twelve point four, "shall ride a bicycle or any wheeled device, essentially, on private property without the express prior written consent of the property owner." Now, last time, you mentioned that that was not really intended to be followed, that it was kind of left to the discretion of the, the peace officer or the bylaw officer. So, and I, I, I think, and this is the issue that I raised last time, is, well, and I guess maybe you can, should I just bring this as an amendment to the next meeting when we look at this, I guess, if I want it changed?
So I think last meeting, you referred to a kid riding their bike in a Walmart parking lot when we pulled them over. That's actually a private parking lot with public access.
So it's not private property?
It's private property with public access.
Okay.
So private property is, say, a company in town, they have posted private property, no trespassing. That is private property, no public access.
Yep.
Is that a good schools?
That's correct. Schools would be private property, public access.
So that would mean, private property, public access, they could ride their bike through, but if there was a corner of the parking lot at Walmart where they wanted to set up a whole jump system and have, you know, have, have jumps and whatever, that's something where they would have to get permission, because it's not just a, a straight-through. Does that make sense?
Yes, that does make sense, but that would be up to the owner of the parking lot to go and talk to them or approach us.
Thank you.
Would it maybe, like, I guess, would it be helpful then if we actually said private property that does not have public access? Because it just says pub, private property in this case.
Could certainly amend it however you wish.
Okay, well, just like for, because like I said, for, for clarity, when somebody reads it, they might think it means any private property regardless of, of the access. And, yeah, thanks for the other improvements you've made to this. I appreciate, I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. I go now to Counselor Langmaide.
Thank you very much. It's me again. I know you've missed me. Jumping into section twenty point three, this is the section about parking permits, and specifically about disabled street parking and requesting disabled street parking if you are a disabled person looking to have a spot identified outside of your house. And I just have a question here. In section A, it says that the, the person requesting the installation of disabled street parking is responsible for all costs incurred by the town completing such a request. How much does that typically cost?
Off the top of my head, I'm not too sure. That goes through different, it's the sign that they pay for and the painting of blue along the curb, I believe.
Is there a, a ball, I, I guess, I guess what I'm, this is where I'm, this is where I'm thinking with this, is I, I'm generally thinking that someone who has a disability, who, who requires long-term street parking accommodation, you know, there, there is a chance that they might not be working full-time, they might not have full-time employment, full-time income, they might even be on ACH, which is, you know, sixteen hundred and eighty-five dollars a month, and I, I have a soft spot. They, they deserve to have a safe place to, to park in front of their houses, you know, it's not their fault. They have, have a disability, they have, they have a right to have a safe place to park and access their homes. So I, I would be interested to find out, to get some information on just kind of what that cost is, and what a resident who's looking for that service might expect to pay, and how often it occurs in, in town. So is this something that we have, you know, one request every two years, or do we have fifty of them every year?
I believe I've personally only seen less than a handful.
Okay. If we could maybe take, take that, take that as an away, just to get an email back on that one, unless...
Mark might have a...
I'm sorry, I don't have a, an answer for you, Counselor Langmaide, but I can speak with the Operations Department on some costs. You can bring them back forward. If, if it's the wish of council that the town would incur these costs, that would be a motion from council to amend the bylaw to indicate that. So we can come back when this, when this brings forward some true costs.
If, if we could get some costs, that's, it's not something that I'm recommending we remove right now, but depending on what the cost truly is, maybe that's something that we could do, could look at as a council and decide together on that. And then my final questions are around parades and processions. I see, Kevin, you still want to okay the horses in town, and I'll live with that. I mean, I hope you get a phone call about that one day. I hope someone asks you for a horse.
Actually, I approved one today.
Of course you did, of course.
Was it for you, though, or?
Watch, it was for me. I'll be going to Timmy's tomorrow on Buddy, my horse, no. And the, the questions I have are actually not related to horses at all. So I learned in my first parade this year that we're not allowed to throw candy. Where is that rule written, and should that be in here?
We can certainly put it in there. I believe, I was just made aware of it as well in the parade, but I believe there was some unfortunate circum, incidences that happened when kids went out and grabbed the candy when it wasn't thrown far enough, so just to avoid any mishaps. That was the reason for not throwing candy.
I, I agree. I think it's an important safety measure. I was just curious whether it was worth including. Mark, I can see you.
Yeah, Counselor Langmaide, there is no specific law or bylaw that's, you know, what we do is we recommend and we encourage, because of these fatal tragedies that have occurred in other communities, that no members throw that, throw candy and throw others, things like that, for the potential risk involved. If council wishes to write a bylaw, to amend the bylaw to, that we indicate that, that'd be at the whim, however, then they're also subject to this, we could have to establish some fines that could be resolved.
I, I'm not sure I'm willing to take it that far. I was, I was just curious whether it was something that should be included here or not. I think it is an important safety measure. I have heard, heard of those tragic incidents, and I think it is, especially when you're dealing with someone like me who throws like that, you know, safer to not throw candy on the road. But I just wanted to ask about, and the other question I had was in the same section for section twenty-two dot, point two, where we're talking about kind of the information that an applicant needs to provide when requesting permission for a parade. And I noticed that it doesn't mention anything about any sort of insurance that they might need to have to have a parade in case there is an incident.
I can look into that, but because it's on a... I couldn't look into that, but because it's on a public road, what, what insurance are you referring to?
I just, I, I know that there is certain insurance that can be purchased for parades.
Uh, yes, Council Langmead, it's something the town is, is looking into in further capacity regarding all our special events for any, not just parades, whether it's an organized concert or things like that. Special event insurance is typically what it's called. That's something that we are looking at within our, our special events bylaw, that if this is supposed, something that should be required. So it's something we're addressing, or trying to address, I should say.
Okay, so we're, we're looking into it. That's good. I, I just wanted to ask about that, because God forbid we have an accident or an incident and the right coverage isn't in place, especially as more community groups might get involved in the planning of these types of events and they're not, of events, and they're not necessarily put on by the town. That, that's the end of my questions. Thank you very much for your answers today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Langmead. Councilor Montgomery?
Thanks. So I, I'd like to beat a dead horse a bit more, please, if you don't mind, CIO Scobal. Yeah. Just with twelve point four, so. I guess, like, based on this, like, we're saying that we can dictate what happens on people's private property when it comes to, say, skateboarding or scootering or something like that, like. Is that right? Like, we could, we can, without somebody complaining to us, like, we can say, "Hey, you're not allowed to skateboard on that property there," without even knowing what the situation is, really, if they don't have a letter?
I mean, we can take that out. I definitely recall you bringing it up at the last committee of the whole meeting. I just think it's utter respect. There's a lot of money and value that go into, like, even, say, the town, the sidewalk. Skateboards do a lot of damage. Uh, school property, you wanna try and deter them from going on to those private properties, but I'm willing to write that out.
Well, it's more of like, I'm just, like, I'm, I'm thinking about, like, you know, what is our ability, let's say, as a municipality that's creating laws, and, and I'm, I'm a little surprised that, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of not a legal expert, of course. I'm just a little surprised that we can, you know, just kind of make a blanket kind of prescription of, of certain uses of people's private property when there isn't kind of like a, a safety issue, let's say. And like, I totally get your point. Like, yeah, there's, there's certain properties where obviously people don't want people, you know, using the property, et cetera. Yeah, like, you know, I'm, I'm just. It, it's, it kind of seems like we're veering into being a bit too prescriptive, because, again, like.
If I, if I could, could I offer something? To me, twelve point four is a support to the people who own the property. It gives them the support that it stated plainly in a bylaw, that you, as the property owner, are allowed to protect your property or have nobody ride on it, and you are the one who would have to give consent to the, to the person wanting to ride. So I don't, I don't think, this is the way I read it, anyway. I read it that it's, it's not that we wanna fine people on that property. We're kind of supporting or standing behind the property owner, that they can say, "Oh, no, it's in the bylaw. You have to have my permission to be on that property to, to..." But anyway, that's just the way I read that one. Go, go again, Council Montgomery.
Thank you. Yeah, and I certainly, like, I, I take your point, and that's, that's like my impression what kind of trespassing laws are for, is, is so that if anybody's on your property and you don't want them on your property, regardless of what they're doing, you know, you can call the police or you can call somebody and, and have that, have that taken care of with, you know, without the need for our bylaw to, to kind of say that. You know, like I said, I, I always look at these bylaws, you know, as if, like, it's like, what if a perfectly law-abiding person is, is, you know, trying to navigate our, our community? And, you know, my, my daughter, for instance, has a friend, you know, and she comes over, she's got rollerblades on sometimes, and by the letter of this bylaw, I would have to write her a, a letter saying that she's got consent to, you know, kind of go up my driveway with her rollerblades. And, and again, like, I just, I feel like we're kind of veering too much into dictating what happens on people's private property, and I think we should leave it up to the private property owner to, to do that. And I'll, I'll think about this a bit more, you know, maybe it's cleaner, as, as Mayor Fuel says, to have, you know, some sort of a mechanism in there. So I'll think about it some more, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Montgomery. Councilor Wiley?
Uh, would you be able to give some examples of, of twelve dash four? Like, what would that, what would that look like? What is it you're trying to empower the bylaw officers to be able to do?
So, sorry, through your worship, uh, Councilor Wiley, this is basically similar to what Council Montgomery was mentioning. We do not just go and ask somebody if they have a letter of permission to ride on somebody's driveway. It's basically complaint generated. It gives that support to those residents if those children are not moving off of the, their property, to say, "Hey, we have something that we can do to enforce that." When we would show up, if we were provided a complaint, we would mention, you know, you don't have their permission to be on here. Please go find somewhere where, you know, can rollerblade on the sidewalk, you can use your skateboard at the skate park, you can find somewhere where you have permission to utilize the vehicles you have.
And so in the meantime, this doesn't, I just gonna, wanna go back to that term, private property with public access. So this does not refer to private property with public access? So could you give me some examples of private properties that have public access? Would that include, like, the library?
Sorry, there's public access. I can look. It's clearly defined in our map section. What parking lots, pathways have public access, like Walmarts, no frills, Canadian Tire, anywhere where you can take your vehicle with public access. You can take your bike, your e-scooter, rollerblades. I'm not saying they can set up a skate park there where you can still utilize.
Well, and, and it would apply to, if, if, like, let's say there was a brand-new Canadian Tire and they had beautiful, pristine concrete and cement out in front of it. I mean, that's perfect for skateboard riders. So it would give them the backing that, you know, this is, this is private property, we do have public access, but you still have to have permission if you're, like, it gives them kind of some backing that if guys are doing jumps in front of the place, they can say, "It's in the bylaw. You need permission to be doing that."
But does it give them protection? I thought you said if it was a Canadian Tire or Walmart, it wouldn't.
Well, I mean, it's where you can drive your car. You can't drive your car on top of, like, the cement.
Can I, can I throw a proposal? Can we go to twelve point one? This is, I think, one that's written really well, and I'm wondering if, if we could hash it out. So twelve point four kind of mimics this. So twelve point one says, "No person shall ride on," it gives this, all these examples. And then it says, "Upon a sidewalk at a rate of speed that is," and here, here's what I really like, "unreasonable, having regard to the nature, condition, and use of the sidewalk, and the amount and kind of pedestrian traffic." Could twelve point four have something along those lines, like, "No person shall use any private property"? And then kind of mimic this, like, it disregards the nature of the property, or disregards the, something like that?
Mark, your worship, and maybe this is a good, an example, I'm gonna try to attempt an example. So we have a vacant lot here. You know, obviously, it's owned by Jobo Citizen here, and some, some youth or whatever decide to set up a skate park. There's some, some curbs, there's some things that are all set up there. By having twelve point four in effect, this protects that vacant lot and gives the municipal enforcement staff an opportunity to, to enforce it if the owner is not present or, or around. I think what Claudette has spoken to before, though, is that the officers would, would, if they're alerted to this, or if they're just walking by or driving by, and they see this, they would educate the individuals to say, "This is a va—this is a private property. You're not allowed to be on here. Please go move into a different, different place there." If we changed it, as you, I, I think, as you wish, there, Councilor Wiley, like, well, define a rate, you know, it's, it's more about, like I said, a private owner, a private lot, or something like that. It's not, has the access as, as Claudette has indicated here. I, I believe Claudette, is that maybe the intention of it?
Yes, I feel like, well, this is to support the private owner of that land, and we're there to help support them by means of a portion of the bylaw that we can move forward after educating the individual to have them removed, that they do not have the landowner's permission.
Yeah, so I could give an example that I, I think Mark's basically spelling this one out, but I'm gonna, Mark, I'm just gonna spell it out perfectly. So, right near my house, Pat might remember it, too, was this sweet dirt hill. And all the neighborhood kids during the first COVID lockdown turned this thing into, like, I mean, they had irrigation dits, ditches, they had berms. This thing was spectacular. And the private property owners and some, like, major, serious liability issues going on here if somebody gets hurt. And so the thing had to be shut down, and perhaps the bylaw officers didn't have the power to go in there and be like, "You gotta get off this property," because the kids obviously didn't have written consent. So I can definitely see why we would want something like this in the bylaw. I just don't think twelve point four says it. I, I don't think it's clear yet. I think it leaves it too open, and I'm hoping there's a way it can be massaged to make a little more sense.
If, if I might, perhaps another way to think about it is, is somebody owns that property, right? And I think we need to be very careful seeing what somebody else can do on someone else's private property and what they can't. This is, perhaps a way to frame this, is this is an enforcement upon request, right? So if a property owner's okay with, with kids skateboarding and, and jumping down the rails on the steps and whatever, then, you know, nothing's gonna happen. But if they're not okay with it, and it's like Claudette's been saying, is this is a, I guess, a way to support the property owners, and, and that's how I look at it, enforcement upon request. But to say you can do this on that person's property, but you can't do that on this person's property, I think we have to be very careful of property owners' rights as well. That, that would just be my, my thoughts on it.
So I just think twelve point four needs to say that. I, I don't think it's clear.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wiley. Councilor Langmead?
Last time you'll hear from me tonight, or on this topic anyways. I, I think twelve point four is an, an important one to remain in. I think you can't enforce a rule unless the rule is actually written somewhere. So, you know, how am I supposed to be a grumpy, grumpy old grandma and call bylaw and go, "Get the, get these kids off my lawn if there's no rule that says that these kids can't be on my lawn"? I understand that there are trespassing rules and things like that, but sometimes throwing the threat of a trespassing charge is, you know, it, I think there's use in having an intermediary step between a bylaw officer coming and educating and saying, "Hey, you're not, you're not supposed to be on this person's lawn," or, you know, "riding your bike here." And it, it's an important step between that and going, "Okay, now we're gonna charge you for trespassing, 'cause you're not supposed to be here." You know, we can, it can be a, a stepped response, depending on the situation. And, and like I said, you can't enforce a rule that isn't written. So if we're not, if we choose to not include this, then there's, you know, you can't, you can't enforce a rule that's not there. And I, I think this is especially important. You know, I'm thinking along the terms of, you know, if we had a business downtown that did some renovations, put in a beautiful new stairway up to their door with a lovely straight railing on it, and you see some kids, you know, grinding hard down the railing at night after the store's closed and they're causing trouble, you know, there, that might have, you know, it's private privacy, private property with public access. But, yeah. So we, we've talked about that for a little while. Those are, those are my general thoughts on that. But I did have one, one more question in this section, which I've now navigated away from. And that is. Gone. Where did it go? Oh, it was about, you know, the, the, it was actually about twelve point one, saying, "You can't ride bicycles, e-bicycles, scooters, e-scooters, roller skates, inline skate, skateboard, longboard, scooters in there twice." There's a copy paste error in a bunch of sections where scooter's listed twice, but not important. What I'm wondering is, is, it specifically mentions sidewalk. What about the paths in town that are not necessarily a sidewalk in terms of a highway being along a road, but might be a pathway through a green space, and, you know, kids are ripping on, ripping down the path on their e-scooter? Would that also apply there, or would we need to specify that it's not just sidewalks, but pathways as well? And could we include pathways if we're talking about traffic and pathways aren't part of a, you know, the highway system as described?
So I think it's written in the definition section of highway. Sorry, if I'm misunderstanding you, but it says a sidewalk, including a boulevard adjacent to the sidewalk. And there's where it's publicly or privately owned, and the public ordinarily or entitled or permitted to use it for the passage.
Sorry, which, which definition are you?
Highway?
Highway.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna reread that.
In, in this one, Claudette, are we trying to differentiate between a sidewalk and a paved pathway, so that you could ride a bicycle on a paved pathway, but not on a sidewalk in an unreasonable speed?
That is correct.
Thank you. Does that help, Councilor Langmead?
Sorry, I was, I was looking for a reference.
Oh, that's okay. I was just saying, it sounds to me like there, that we'd be differentiating between a sidewalk and a paved pathway, that we're only pointing out that the sidewalk can't be used at any rate of, of unreasonable speed. That is, without having, with unreasonable having, not having regard to the nature, condition, and use of the sidewalk. So it, to me, it feels like the sidewalk is intended for walking, and so no e-bikes or scooters or that with, if they're, if the speed is unreasonable would be allowed. And again, I don't know, it just seems to me it's, it's kind of dealing with, you know, you have these e-bikes that can go pretty fast, and they're pretty silent and...
I, I think, sorry, just, just to clarify, I, I was, what I was hoping was that pathways and sidewalks would be treated the same.
Okay, yeah.
Is that, that sidewalk in this case would also include any pathway that isn't necessarily adjacent to a road.
But that would then limit bicycles being on a paved pathway?
Well, it wouldn't limit them. It would limit them if they were going at an unreasonable speed.
Okay.
They could use them at a reasonable speed.
Sure, I can definitely add that. If, that's no problem.
Just, just to, it's nit, maybe a bit nit, nitpicky at this point. And then also in definitions, just FYI, the definition of holiday is pointless. It's never used in the document. It's, it's not needed here.
Thanks for pointing that out. I compared with other municipalities as well. Thanks.
That's okay. I did a quick find and search.
Any other questions or comments, Council Wiley?
Yeah, thank you. Just back to the infamous twelve point four. I don't wanna remove it. I just wanna have it amit, like, clarified. Yeah, I'd like to go to parades and processions. If I can find it.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
I think.
There it is. So the definition of a parade or a procession, on page twenty-five J, the definition is, "Any group of pedestrians numbering more than twenty and marching or walking on any street," and then it talks about vehicles. I wanted to just, I wondered, does that definition, is it too big of a catch-all? Well, sorry, it does go on to say that they're likely to block obstructed Well, sorry, it does go on to say that they're likely to block, obstruct, impede, or hinder, or interfere with pedestrian or traffic. But would that include something as innocuous as like a Terry Fox run? Our school sends 300 kids out to run around Kinsman Park. Like, they're obstructing pedestrians. Would they need permission from the CAO?
I would say no, but that's not a parade or a procession. That's a run. That's, that's a designated time run where you guys are going out.
It's like the... Sorry, I should also note that this is on a street versus a park. So if this, if this Terry Fox run was occurring in the park...
So only on, okay, so only on, marching or walking on any street. So even just, 'cause they'll obviously have to cross the street, traffic stopped for 300, you know, like...
Yeah, so for example, on Sunday, there is a Terry Fox run that's occurring here in town. They have volunteers that are positioned at one of the crosswalks that they're designating to stop traffic when that happens. So, the run is running through the streets, however, it's only at that one designated crosswalk. So, um, we would not define it as a parade because the runs are not occurring on the street.
Okay, that, that settles those for me. Okay. I can't remember if we talked about this after the first reading, but 15, idling. I just keep reading this and rereading this. So, any person shall not cause, permit, or allow a veto, vehicle to idle more than five minutes, uh, unless it's, basically unless it's cold outside. Well, what if you're in front of a, an educational institute? What if you're, what if it's plus 30 and you're sitting there and you're trying to get the air conditioning on? You're picking up grandma from the medical, the doctor's office, like, why do we even have the idling? I don't understand the point of this one. Or you're picking up your kid from school and maybe it's not minus 30, but it's, you know, plus three.
I believe, I'll have to get back to you on this, but I'm pretty sure this is a bigger law than a municipal bylaw. I'm pretty sure in designated areas, you're, it's like a no idle zone. Like in front of medical facilities, like right there, so your exhaust is going into their entrances. And I believe that has more to do with health than this bylaw alone. But I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very interested in this. Cause I just, I picture myself picking up my kid from school and now it's been seven minutes, you know, and it's hot outside. I didn't really want my, turn my car off.
I think it, again, this is, empowers the bylaw officers if there's a, if there's a necessary complaint. I don't believe the bylaws officers will, will go around and start, start the clock when they're watching somebody this way. I think the intent is, again, well, as Claudette said, and it's well, clean air. Um, you know, it's written that obviously for, for minus zero. And if council wished to, uh, change the temperatures up, if you wanna have it for air conditioning as well, that we can say it's above 20 or below 20, uh, if that's, I think, but I think the intention is to try to, to limit and empower our staff, the staff, if there's a, a vehicle idling for more than five or 30 minutes as indicated.
I, yeah, I would just appreciate more information on this. And if, if it is council's will to include idling a car, then that's fine with me, but I'd like to know some more. And that's all my questions. Thank you, Claudette.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? See, none. Thank you very much, Claudette and Mark and Kevin.
Thank you.
For your answers and discussion. We move now to 5.2, Asset Management Briefing. Good evening, and if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself when you come to the microphone, and, uh, we look forward to hearing from you on this topic.
There you go. Thanks for your patience. So hi, everyone. Uh, I am going to be giving you an asset management briefing tonight. Um, I will be introducing myself. Just give me a second. I realize that's maybe two or three slides into the presentation too far. Um, but tonight, our objectives for this briefing, uh, is, first, for awareness, what is asset management? Uh, second, an introduction into some of the concepts of asset management. And finally, to inspire some conversation on the topic. So, uh, a loose sort of agenda for my presentation will be an introduction, uh, then a discussion on what is asset management. Uh, I'll discuss seven questions that asset management tries to answer. Uh, then I'll have a brief conversation on the town's asset management program, and finally, uh, questions. So, I guess I should introduce myself. Uh, so my name is Andre Aloa, and I am the, uh, asset management officer for the town of Strathmore. I'm thrilled to be speaking to you tonight. Asset management is one of the topics that I really enjoy sort of getting into, discussing with people. Uh, I've been working in municipal government for over eight years, and, uh, from day one, I was literally pulled aside and said, "Hey, we've got a project for you. It's called asset management." And I said, "Oh, what's that?" And it just snowballed from there. Um, so I, I come to municipal government with a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Waterloo. Uh, I've completed, um, education in GIS, uh, digital geography and GIS from, uh, the, sorry, it used to be called Ryerson. It's now called, uh, Metro Toronto University. Uh, I have, uh, from the University of Alberta. Um, I completed a program called the National Advanced Certificate in Local Authority Administration Level Two, so it deals with, um, municipal, municipal work. I am, um, I have, I am, um, a camp professional, which is a certified asset management professional through, uh, PMAC. And I'm also certified, uh, through the Institute of Asset Management, which is an organization based out of, uh, the UK. Uh, and also, I love talking about this stuff so much that I volunteer for an organization in Alberta called Infrastructure Asset Management Alberta. And I was the former chair of that association. Um, so this, uh, topic is really sort of up my alley. Uh, what is asset management? So, I'm actually gonna start with, uh, probably a bit of a, of a strange way to, to go about it, but I'm gonna tell you what it is not first. So it is not software. Asset management is not software. And I cannot tell you how often the two get confused. Often when we're talking about, uh, asset management, it's referred to as a system. People think of system, they think of software, and it's not. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. It is, it just isn't. So if there's one thing that you do remember from today's presentation, it should be that asset management is not software. Uh, if that's the only thing, I mean, I'll, you know, we'll call it a draw and I'll, and I'll, I'll take it. Um, so, okay, what is asset management? So, again, this whole presentation is gonna be sort of unconventional. So we're gonna start in an unconventional spot, but I think a very appropriate spot. So asset management is about community. Specifically, it's about the services that we are offering to our community. And as a municipality, there are a wide range of different services that we offer our residents. Um, so we have to try and figure out what is the most effective way of providing those services to our residents. To answer that, I mean, if you were to go through the lens of an, uh, you know, speak to an asset manager, they would, you know, point to some books like those and, and standards. Um, but really, let's, let's not go into those weeds. Let's sort of take a step back, almost at the 300,000-foot level, and just sort of consider, uh, you know, how do we know that we're being effective? Let's sort of ask that question again. Well, we really need to understand what are our objectives? What are our goals? What are our priorities? How are you gonna know if you're effective if you don't even know, you know, your objectives, your goals, your priorities? So here in the town of Strathmore, uh, obviously, yes, we do have priorities. We do have objectives. We do have things that we hope for our community. And these things are, are obviously very important. And so through your guidance, uh, we have sort of discussed how we want this to be a community where there's affordable housing, where there's financial sustainability, uh, where, uh, development is done in an intentional way, where, uh, we pay attention to climate resiliency, uh, and environmental stewardship. We care about the economic development of our community. And of course, we hope that, uh, there's, uh, wellness within our, within our community. And all of these things that we have sort of set as priorities need to be reflected within the services that we're providing our residents. So in terms of how do we know if we're being effective? Well, how well do we match these priorities is, is the first question. So now to go back to sort of the conventional spot, uh, the traditional definition of asset management is, "It is the coordinated activity of an organization to realize value from assets." It's awful, isn't it? It's incredibly vague. Like, what does it mean? So, okay, let's go back to that idea of, uh, we've got our priorities, and so now we're, we're taking those priorities and we're coordinating an activity or a series of activities for organization. That makes sense. Now there's that second part, "To realize value from assets." What, what's going on there? Well, it's talking about asset. This is asset management. So, let's take another step back and, and think about, well, you know, a lot of these definitions were developed by private enterprise, so let's sort of step into that. So let's just say we weren't the town of Strathmore. We were making slinkies. Um, so, you know, we need to realize value from our assets. So we are coordinating an activity or a series of activities to create these things that roam downstairs, alone or in pairs, and make a slinkety sound. And when we're doing that, we obviously own things to make them. So we have a factory, perhaps. Uh, we would have machinery, uh, to make the slinkies. And then, of course, uh, I would consider assets, uh, to be the individuals that help create the processes, that have the knowledge, that understand the best way to, to make slinkies, perhaps. Uh, and this would all be, in effect, assets that are realizing value because we're creating these slinkies in a way that is effective. And we're taking all of these things that we own to then, uh, make profit in, in this case. So, a coordinated activity of an organization to realize value from assets. Um, so, "From assets" is, is interesting. The value isn't the asset. The value is in what they're producing. And for us, again, to go back to that idea, uh, we aren't producing slinkies, obviously. We are, uh, you know, a service provider for a community. Um, so then, well, how do we then ensure that, uh, these services are being provided in an effective way? To ask that question again, well, it all sort of depends on a system. And there are a number of different systems out there, depending on the organization that's sort of created them. This one is maybe my favorite. It's from the Institute of Asset Management. I mean, there's different components. We won't get into it today. It's really not, that's not the point. Uh, so that's one. Uh, here's another one, um, by the, I think they're called the Global Asset Management Council. But, I mean, all of this is fine. Um, that, we need to have a system to ensure that we are providing value from our assets. And thankfully, you know, there's a very good system, uh, in, in the municipal space. And what is that? It's software. No! Haha, I gotcha. It's not software. Okay, sorry. Uh, so the system is very simple. I mean, we don't have to have all these boxes. Um, this is our system as a, as a municipality. Um, so it is a series of documents and sort of, uh, an assurance that these documents are all sort of in alignment. So let's go with the first one. The first one is, uh, the strategic vision. So, council gets to determine the organization's levels of service, maybe at a high level, and they define our strategic vision and our goals and priorities. So they're setting the direction. You set our direction. That's the first thing. So we need to have a goal, a strategic vision. The next is a commitment to meet that goal. So in this case, the commitment, I would suggest, is the asset management policy. So, administration makes a commitment to achieve your vision by using a structured methodology. And in this case, it's the methodology that's provided by, uh, asset management and its principles. Uh, the third part is what is often referred to as the Strategic Asset Management Plan. And those can be thought of as the instructions. So, um, what this does is, this document sets the parameters. It ensures that, uh, we will be able to execute on the commitment. So it sets, it sets the parameters, uh, in much like how a land use bylaw would say, "We intend to develop and we intend to develop in these ways." The Strategic Asset Management Plan states that, you know, "We intend to follow asset management and we intend to do it in these particular ways." And then, of course, finally, is, uh, the Asset Management Plan. Um, and so these are the actual plans, uh, that administration would execute on to, um, advance the, the vision and the goals of, of council. And that, and then, well, sorry, and then the final thing, there's that weird arrow thing, uh, which says line of sight. So basically, what that means is, all of these documents need to, uh, be in alignment. They need to work in harmony with one another. So when we're executing on our plans, every action that we take when we have our boots on the grounds is somehow contributing to the end goal, the strategic vision. That's how you know there's that line of sight and there's that alignment. So, again, what is asset management? Well, asset management, yes, it's, it's about service provision. And of course, it's about our community. And so, the things that we own, our assets, are what allow us to provide service to the community. And so, again, this idea of our organization gains value from our assets during the production of, of service delivery. So, um, I think I just repeated that. The, the town's asset facilitate service delivery. I got ahead of myself. Uh, so that's the general idea, and that's great. But, okay, so now we need to set up a system, uh, that will allow us to meet council's strategic goals. How do we know if the system is actually good? That can be answered in many different ways. And the way that I'm gonna tackle it is, I'm gonna say there are seven fundamental questions that asset management needs to answer. Uh, so that first one is, what do you have and where is it? So obviously, there's a lot of information in that, like, what do you have? So we need to coordinate activities, uh, to ensure that we're gaining, uh, value from our assets. Well, we need to know everything that we own so that we can coordinate those things to, to provide the service that we need to provide. Is the town doing that? Yes, of course. We are keeping track of, of what we own and where. Is it complete? No, no. I mean, there's still more work that needs to be done. This is a long process. So I put up these things because these are the software titles, uh, just a few of them, that people love to confuse with what asset management actually is. It's not, I mean, these things help, uh, with asset management, but they are not. So really, what we're doing is we're creating a registry when we're asking the question, "What do you have and where is it?" Well, we create a literal document that has all of those things listed.
Andre, are you comfortable with questions throughout, or would you prefer...
Absolutely. Please interrupt.
Counselor Langmead?
Okay, councillor Langmead?
Thank you very much. Just to jump in, just for, so I can kind of help create this in my head. What dollar value do you have to cross before something is considered an asset? Are we tracking every pen, every paperclip? Or, you know, and I know we wouldn't, that would be a little ridiculous. It seems a little ridiculous. Maybe we do. It seems ridiculous to me. But, you know, what's the kind of that threshold there that we're thinking of?
Well, it depends who you talk to.
Well, I'm talking to you, so what's your thoughts on it?
So, I mean, there is a standard tangible capital asset policy. I forgot what the exact policy is called here in Strathmore, but that would be defined. So they would say anything over, I think, $5,000 is an asset, for example. But you're right. I mean, and that's part of it. What is an asset as well? When is it actually going to be contributing to that value, right? Great question, for sure. So, yeah, and that's part of it. I mean, and thank you. I'll take that, and we'll go to the next question, which is, what is it worth, right? Is another question. Is it worth tracking or not? So, I mean, worth is an interesting, you know, dilemma in and of itself because there's different ways to look at it. So I've got a thing. How much did it cost? That's historic cost. I have a thing. How much does it cost to replace? That's also an interesting consideration. That's a replacement cost. And really, the most, in terms of costs, what I would like council to think about is the idea of whole lifecycle costs of an asset. So, for example, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. So let's just say we've got a lift station, for example, and there's a pump in it, and we've got to replace it. So we go to, I don't know, the pump catalog? Forgive me for not knowing. I'd go where I go. Yeah, pump SARAS, thank you. And I find two. These ones pump at the capacity that I need, and they seem, you know, suited for my purpose. One is $10,000, one is $5,000. Well, obviously, I should go with the finest, cheapest $5,000 red pump because I want to save money. We're fiscally responsible, all of that. But of course, it's more than just the purchase price. So, for example, there are many things to consider when it comes to costs. So sure, we've got the purchase price, which was, what? $10,000 for this blue one. And the install is $1,000, for example. So we got to, you know, we got to account for that. We need to account that the maintenance of this thing is approximately $500 a year. The power consumption of this thing is $4,300 for repairs, approximately. And of course, when the time comes that we got to get rid of this pump because it will eventually fail, we're going to have to pay $200, we're guessing, to dispose of it. Okay, so that's great. So we know those costs. So you kind of add them all up over 25 years, and then you get your final cost, your whole lifecycle cost. That's, you know, $116,200. Great. So let's go to that red cheaper one. Well, this one, $1,000 install, it's the same. $600 a year to maintain, that's about $100 more. Power is about $1,000 more. This one's $5,000 a year. Repair costs are approximately the same, we guess, $300 a year. And then to dispose of it, the same thing, $200. So you'd go, you'd do the math, and you say, okay, that one, over the total lifespan of that pump, we should expect to spend $133,000, approximately. So now, all of a sudden, you, when you thought, looking through the pump SARAS catalog, that you were going to save $5,000 by buying the red pump, you're actually, over the course of the life of this thing, going to be spending $17,000 more. So when it comes to what is it worth, asset management really promotes this idea of we need to look at this thing holistically, whatever it is. Okay, sorry to jump ahead. But the third question is, what is the condition and expected remaining service life of our assets? So that's, I mean, that's incredibly important. First, we need to know where they are. Sure, absolutely, what they cost. And then, what condition are they on, are they in? So for example, this was a road asset management plan produced in 2019. And, yeah, so they did conditions for all of our roads. So that's, you know, at that point in time, the conditions that were given, provided to us. So, okay, that's great. And now knowing that, of course, we can then take that condition information, and this is an example out of Carroll County, where, okay, if you do worst first, which is the one on the left, you'll see that that expenditure, over time, just increases and increases and increases. Whereas now, if you know the condition and you combine it with some optimized capital replacement schedules, you potentially can save, you know, a lot of money. But that doesn't happen if you don't know what condition things are in. So understanding condition is incredibly important as well. The fourth question, what is the level of service expectation and what needs to be done? So level of service is interesting. So we obviously know that we provide a whole bunch of services to our community. So I go to an example that isn't mine. It's from a colleague of mine, Jamie Rosma Stinson. She works for the city of Calgary. And she, and just sort of in conversation, because like I said, I like to talk about this stuff. We were talking about parks. And in particular, you know, a park in Calgary. And they went to the community. It was an aging population. And they said, you know, "Do you like your park?" I said, "We love it." And they said, "Yeah, we do a lot of maintenance on it, and we make sure that it's top-notch for you." So we cut the grass every week. And in consultation with the community, the community said, "Yeah, we don't really care." That you, you know, "It'd be fine if you did it once a month, actually. We'd all be okay with that." And Jamie kind of heard that and went, "Oh, my gosh. We are going to save a lot of money because we're going to set a level of service that is appropriate for this community." And that's the one thing that when we think of level of service, often people think more, 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 faster, all this. But really, when we want, when we're talking about level of service, we want to talk about appropriate. What is the good fit? And level of service gets into a lot of detail. There's different ways of thinking of level of service. So this is, just to go through it, I hesitate because I'm like, should I go into it? Yeah, let's do it. Sorry, sorry to hold you hostage. So, yeah, when we're thinking of level of service, well, there's sort of different ways, different perspectives on it. So there's the technical levels of service. So to cut this grass, what do we need? We need mowers, we need people, we need whipper snippers. That's sort of a technical level of service. Then you've got that customer level of service, which is probably the most important. So that's what our residents see when it comes to the level of service. So for them, it's the frequency of work. For them, it's once a month, once every other week, something like that. That's the customer level of service. And that always needs to be considered very carefully. Then finally is the service outcome, or sorry, the, what are our objectives for our service level?
Excuse me, Andre. We have a question from councillor Mitzner.
Yes.
Okay, so just previous to what we're talking about now, has this position existed with the town of Strathmore for a long time? Or are you in a new position?
I'm a new position. So I began on April 15th.
Okay. My next question is, because we've asked over a year ago now, we're looking, as council, for what you're referring to as a registry? Like, what are our assets? We don't know.
Yes.
So if we could see, like, I mean, infrastructure, we've been told is an asset. But we also know what's above the ground. So then we can do research, and we can look at these things that you're bringing to our attention. But we need to see the whole picture.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So what are our objectives when it comes to our levels of service? And then finally, the corporate level of service. So how does it speak to our goals, our vision, level of service? The fifth question is, when do you need to do it? So again, for example, we have the road asset management plan, which speaks to our condition. And part of that road asset management plan also spoke to when we need to do it. So this is a proposed long-term asphalt plan.
While you're talking about that, the road plan and the infrastructure below, this was one of the things that I found interesting when we started, in my first term on council and second as well. We started to really work at repairing roads, but the infrastructure, the pipes below. And one of the things I hadn't considered was the loss of water on a daily basis due to damaged pipes, not just from a conservation point of view regarding that asset, but as far as the cost of the water from Calgary. And I hadn't considered that kind of thing. So considering your assets and improving upon them gives you benefits that you don't necessarily see right away. And obviously, this area of Alberta's, you know, got a real, we have to be concerned about water usage and, you know, having things come from the Bow River and Bow Glacier. It was really an eye-opener for me. So I really appreciate this example you've been talking about, too.
Thank you. Yeah, and likewise. I mean, you know the condition of those pipes. Then you know sort of the risks that you are holding if you continue with them at that condition. And again, it goes back to that idea of optimized replacement plans or even that idea of, you know, adding, when you need to do things, sometimes small but timely renewal investments will save you money over time. This question is very involved. So I am admittedly going to breeze over the risk section. But how much will it cost? And what is the acceptable level of risk? So, I mean, just very quickly, risk, we all sort of know is a function of likelihood and consequence. So you go through that, the example that you give. You know, a pipe is about to burst. Or maybe we're aware that it's a smaller pipe, as an example. And it doesn't affect too many residents because it's in an isolated area of town. Well, yeah, is, what's the likelihood? Well, maybe the likelihood is really, really high. But the consequence, because it only affects one or two people, households, what have you, is lower. So you need to sort of straddle yourself within these, not really quadrants, but sort of suggested activities. So understanding your risk is important and will affect the strategies that you take on. And then finally, how do you ensure long-term affordability? Well, the best way is to ensure that you have a good system. Because the community is worth it at the end of the day. And that's what this is all about. So that is what is asset management, very, very quickly. And I do appreciate that I've been sort of skirting over some things and not going into the weeds on purpose. But that is, if you were to understand asset management, it's about our community, it's about service delivery, it's about how we're managing our assets to ensure that service delivery. So I guess the next question then would be, you know, what, where are we right now? And what are we doing? And what, how, what is our approach as a community for our asset management program? So what we've decided to do is do a assessment. So we did the assessment internally. We used a tool that was created by FCM, which is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And they go through, and you evaluate the organization based on these five different competency areas. Then, once you've gone through that evaluation, there are a number of activities, projects, perhaps, that you are then, you should then sort of take on to progress. So I guess what needs to be understood is that the town is in its infancy with its asset management program. There is a lot of work. And the projects that we're working on will not get us to the end of asset management. There is, there's never an end. And in terms of FCM and its grading, we are at sort of a one out of five. It's not bad. I mean, in terms of where we sit across the board with respect to other municipalities, we are right there. We're sort of right in the middle, in the heart of how all municipalities are right now with their asset management programs. And so we created a roadmap of activities that we will be taking on for the next two to three years. And again, these activities aren't going to get us to that five out of five. These activities will get us to two out of five. But it's a slow iterative process. And it is something that I'm looking forward to taking on. There's a lot of support within senior leadership to get these things done. And so just to go through some of these things, we need to discuss at some point in the future an asset management policy. We need to define a strategy for the asset management program. We need to sort of establish performance measures for our levels of service. We need to establish our levels of service. What are, what are the services that we provide? That needs to be understood. We need to include you more in these conversations of asset management. That's also on there. So in April, Infrastructure Asset Management, in conjunction with Alberta Municipalities and rural, the rural municipalities of Alberta, are putting on a training course for elected officials and senior leaders. So that's something that I would want you to consider. We're also going to be, let's see here. So we've already sort of outlined our asset management team. We've got an asset management steering committee now at the town. We've outlined our terms of reference. We have an understanding of how we are making these decisions internally. We need to eventually start creating asset management plans. And all of this will take up two, three years. If we're going to create plans, we need to have the information. Like you said, we need to have that asset registry first. And so we have to build all of these pieces. It's a system. It's a culture change. It's something that we are tackling, and we're in it, you know, for the long haul. This is now how I hope the town will conduct its business. So any further questions?
Thank you for that. Councillor Langmead?
Thank you very much, your worship. Hello, fellow nerd. I'm excited for this. I love asset management. And I say, I say that word with a lot of respect.
Sure, sure. Well, no, you found me out.
My nerd. So I have, I have a few questions here that I'm just going to maybe run through and get your ideas on, just things that I wrote down while you were speaking. One of them is, can you talk a little bit about how asset management relates to procurement? And how those two need to hold, kind of, need to hold hand, need to hold hands together? Because, yeah.
Sure.
You talk about it.
So, yeah, I think, you know, obviously, when we're talking about capital procurement, there is, there's a process that we should follow. And I'm slowly getting back to that slide. Oh, man, I talked a lot, didn't I? I apologize. Yeah. Hey, 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 enough. So, I mean, if we're looking at procurement, this is an interesting model. So this would, this one would suggest that we need to do a demand analysis, needs a solution, understand our needs, so community needs if we're going to be taking on a large capital project. Maybe I'm steering us in the wrong direction by trying to answer this too technically. But does it have a place in procurement? Yes, absolutely. So at a minimum, it's that idea of whole lifecycle cost. Let's just say that, to keep it simple. Let's just say that, to keep it simple. So if we're going to be procuring a large capital asset, we need to ensure that we understand the costs associated with it. Part of it is, you know, understanding if it's appropriate for the community, yes, of course, but then also the majority of costs in the lifespan of any asset is in the operations and maintenance, like 80%. So if we don't really understand the costs of running a thing, or, you know, let's say a fieldhouse, whatever that is, you know, we aren't maximizing our money. And so, yes, absolutely, it should be a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of, on the same thread of, you know, a whole lifecycle analysis, how do you factor in things like inflation and technological change into a lifecycle analysis for costing, you know, especially these days when you might be procuring something with the intention of operating it for 20 to 25 years? But a technological change can quickly make it irrelevant.
Sure. I guess I'll answer that with, you know, one of my favorite quotes about any models. Like, really, we're just trying to make decisions that are well-informed, defensible, using models, perhaps. But the problem with models is all models are wrong and some models are useful. And so, you know, you can only make decisions with the information that you have. And, yeah, sometimes you won't foresee the technological advancements that occur. It's part of life, I guess.
So it's just a risk that you have to kind of include within the evaluation? Got it. And then my final question that I have written down here is more around inclusion of ecological assets in an asset management strategy. So not just the pipes under the ground, the fire hydrants, the benches, you know, the physical items, but how can you value something like the number of trees that we have in our community? You know, how can you value, you know, what value can you put on a tree? And if the community lost that tree and the replacement of that tree? How can you value green space? Those types of assets that we have that are maybe a little less tangible?
Sure, I love that question. I think it is something that people are struggling with right now. There is a movement that's called the Municipal Natural Asset Institute, or something like that? Thank you. And they are really, yeah, and they're really doing a great work in that space of natural assets and creating, so the idea of an asset registry. Well, yeah, okay, we know all of the roads, we know all of the pipes, but should we not also include things like wetlands or trees?
Some of your planning plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've attended conferences on the topic, and that's a conversation I've had with our senior leaders, and it's something that I think is valid and worth sort of looking into. The more contentious space of that conversation is, I suppose, how do you, how do you value them in terms of, do you actually put them on the books or do you not? Because if you do one action or the other, they obviously have different consequences. But yes, asset management can speak to natural assets, you know, for sustainability purposes, et cetera. And, I mean, you have a watershed, for example. That watershed sort of handles so many cubic meters of water. You could, I guess in theory, say, if we were to engineer a like system, that would cost X amount. So then you've, then you've almost got a value, perhaps. So something to think about.
I guess where, my thoughts for that, we're going, you know, I'll use trees as the example here, you know, for every tree that you have in the community, there's an associated cost for maintaining that tree, making sure that it's safe and healthy and looks nice and it's gonna survive. And then there's a cost for replacing that tree and how, you know, you could even get down to a granular level on, how much are we spending per species of tree? If you really wanted to, you know, you could do some neat things. So, yeah, thank you for speaking on that. Asset management is really interesting to me, and I also like how you spoke about smaller investments over time can actually save you money, rather than just one large rehab. You know, it makes me think of, back in July, I had a faucet in my house. For a couple of months, I knew that faucet was acting a little weird, but I didn't do anything about it, 'cause I wanted something else. And that faucet failed, and now I get new floors and new drywall and new insulation. And of course, you know, once you get the contractors in, you might as well do the fireplace and the rest of the floors. So it's that idea of, had I not been so cheap and spent $250 on a new faucet when I, when I thought, oh, this faucet is acting a little funny, I could have saved myself a whole lot of money, even though a $200 faucet might seem, well, the one I have is working. Well, it's that idea of, well, it's time. So I think asset management has a really important role in the future of the community and how we, especially how we as a council conduct planning. And I'm excited for the work that you're doing and to see, to see the outcome of it. And welcome to the team as of April.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Langmead. Councillor Montgomery, followed by Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you. First of all, like, great presentation. That was one of the best presentations that I've been privy to in this council. Just following up on, well, first of all, and I just want to say, I'm really excited to see what you're gonna do, and, you know, it's great to see, you know, kudos to you, Kevin. It's great to see the town moving in this direction, and, you know, this is, it's a big investment, but I think it's completely worthwhile and it's gonna pay off. One question I have just has to do with, like, intangible value, let's say. So, you know, if you're getting non-monetary value from an asset, is that accounted for in asset management? Like, when I, like, you know, if you take, say, something like a park, but, you know, like, where we're not getting actual money, you know, out of the park necessarily, but people are enjoying the use of something, is that accounted for in asset management?
Sure. I guess in the sense that we'd be considering that through level of service.
Okay.
So this is, you know, the enjoyment of park, of a park is something that we want our residents to participate in, and so we would set the levels of what that looks like. You know, do we have benches there? Do we have free benches there? Do we have flowers there? I mean, all of those things have a cost, and all of those things would be planned for through an asset management plan.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, like I said, I really appreciate, like, things that are data-driven and evidence-based, and this is, you know, obviously what you're all about, and so, like I said, thank you very much, and I'm excited to see what you're gonna do.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here, and if I had my way, we would have hired an urban anthropologist, but we'll take an asset manager. And your background is impressive. And in staying out of your operations side, my question is related to that whole concept of property versus asset. If you can own it versus whether you can put value on it. And so for me, I just want to say that's really, really important, because I understand that asset management is usually related to fiscal management, property value, and what you can put, as my conservative friend at the end said, a dollar value on. And so I think that there are also assets that we can't, that are worth something, that we don't necessarily put a value on. And I think that those things are the things that we, that also, in terms of the priorities that council set in their strategic direction, that drive the heart and soul of community, that make the journey worthwhile. And so I believe that those things, too, are equitable and measurable. But I would like to hear your thoughts on how you've incorporated them into your strategy.
Right. So I guess, and by the way, just to sort of state it, I love that idea. I mean, that's how I like to look at this issue as well. It's really, we really need to consider what is valuable for the community, not, you know, necessarily, is it tangible? I mean, those things are obviously important, but at the end of the day, it's what is bringing value to our community. And there are things that, for example, programs that we've got, I consider those incredibly valuable, but you would never say this program is an asset necessarily, you wouldn't put it on the books like that. You wouldn't have it on an accountant ledger to say this, you know, but I think, I think that's, that's there. So the issue that we've got is an issue of capacity. And do I want to get there? Yes. And I don't want to kill enthusiasm, but I do want to remain pragmatic about the asset management program. So the, likely, the first things that we will look at are those more traditional things, and then we'll expand. And I do hope that we do expand to take account for natural assets. I mean, these are, these are my personal opinions, and I'm sorry I haven't sort of maybe necessarily spoken to others.
I think that's really important.
Yeah.
I think, I think my concern, when you look at council's priorities, which you touched on in this presentation, those priorities are heavily entrenched in values. And so representing the values of community as a, as a council with very diverse ideas and context, you know, we come out of this idea, I think, as you said, of creating value, you know, within the objectives. And so I think that if we don't think about, if we don't think about asset management from a holistic perspective, in terms of not just what we can own, but also that which has value. And so whether or not you can quantify it absolutely, in the same way you would quantify the desk that we sit behind, you can still measure it and you can still quantify it. And so losing that, because to me, when I look at our priorities, that is what drives this process, at least from the governance perspective, sitting behind here. So you've told us about all the things that you've done, and my hope is that that has come to be through the priorities that you mentioned in this presentation, because if it doesn't, that, you know, there is a huge loss in terms of that which you, that you assign worth to but haven't quantified. And so quantifying that, to me, is important.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think, no, and I hear your point. I feel like what you're saying is, we need to ensure that the actions that we're taking are going to meet our priorities or objectives and bring value to our community. And that's why the asset management system...
It lends itself. It does.
It does. And so that's where that line of sight is so important. So the instructions need to result in progress on the strategic vision, just like the asset management plan needs to result in progress to the strategic vision. This system is nothing without that line of sight. And actually, that, that line of sight is probably the most important thing.
Well, and I think that you said it, you said that, you know, creating value within the owner's objective, our community, they own this, not us, but our community owns this. So that idea of creating value, and value means more than just the quantifiable concrete pieces, but, yeah, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andre, when you're tracking the assets, and I really like the example of the pipes from Pipes R Us, but when you're looking at the cost of the item and then the lifecycle, councillor Langmead mentioned, councillor Langmead mentioned the concept of inflation as far as replacing it through the lifecycle. How do you track an asset when the opposite occurs? And I'll give you an example. We had a price quote on Lakeside Boulevard here to redo it with all the infrastructure, and the price came in high and we weren't comfortable with it. So we put it on hold. The following year, there was a real downturn in the economy, and we were able to get it and another road done for the quoted price of the one lakeside. So when you look at that asset, Lakeside Boulevard, how do you then track it and accommodate for the concept that you got it basically, in a way, for half the price and you got two roads done for the original quoted price?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I think this process is iterative, and I think that's, you know, key in understanding, and I can't find the slide that I want naturally, but it's this idea that you're always going back. So yes, we create an asset management plan this year, but what we need to do is, we need to make a commitment to say, periodically, whatever that is, whatever is deemed appropriate, once every three years, once every other year, once a year, we will make a plan and adjust based on new information. So, yeah, what do I do here? So the one that I'm looking for is this. Right here. So you can see that, yeah? So it's this idea of whenever you get new knowledge, it has to go into your decision-making. And you're doing this, oh, you know, it's, like I said, it's iterative and it needs to be periodic. So when we do this, the asset management program is not static, and asset management plan is not something that we can just create and put on the shelf. It's something that we need to incorporate into our decision-making, and because we're incorporating it into our decision-making, it needs to be looked at frequently.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery.
Thank you. So with the example of the pumps, how, like, you know, you can obviously predict the amount of power that's probably gonna get used more easily than, say, something like maintenance. So how would you, you know, if you have a $5,000 and a $10,000 pump, how would you predict, you know, like, the difference in, say, maintenance that you would expect over the life term?
Sure. So I'm not a pump expert, but typically, there would be some sort of tech sheet, and it would have, it would provide specs like that. So, and that's the other thing, too, as an asset management officer, I'm not an, I'm not an expert in, you know, all of these different functions. What I'm here to do is, I'm here to facilitate, to set up the system, to ensure that the system is set up properly. But to answer your question, you know, someone who is more well-versed in that kind of world of pumps, they would probably go to a tech sheet and those things would probably be listed, and they'd have their methods to accurately cost.
So if I might, this is where my plant days come in. So to get back to the mayor's comments initially here, asset management isn't the only tool. It's a powerful tool, but there's other tools we would look at. So in terms of procurement, you know, you would have the work output by the asset management plan, but then, you know, if you think that you need to defer it for a year, your plan would be able to tell you, is there still a net benefit to deferring it a year to get better construction pricing, right? So once this is in place, it's, there's, it's very, it's a tool to help make decisions, but it's not the only consideration in making a decision. Now, once the asset management program is done and in place, getting into the pump question, you would have a maintenance program established, right? And you would have predictive maintenance, you would have preventive maintenance, and you'd have regular maintenance. So you can take this information from that, and then you start drilling down and having more detailed operations and maintenance plans based on what the asset management program tells you. You know, in addition, if you use the pumps, you know, there's the $5,000 pump and there's the $10,000 pump, but sometimes you also say, we're gonna have a pump for, we're gonna make a decision that we're gonna run that pump for 15 years or we're gonna run it for 20 years. And, you know, the conventional wisdom is, we'll get more value for running it for the 20 years, but your asset management program, complemented by your predictive and preventative maintenance, may actually, again, say, actually, it's better if we only use it for 15 years. It's cheaper in that lifecycle. So, you know, as was mentioned at the beginning, this is just the beginning, and asset management will never end. And in fact, over time, it will, the organization will drill down further within their functions and their equipment, and look at their maintenance plans and their operations plans using the information that comes from asset management.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you very much, and, yeah, thank you very much, Andre. That's fantastic, you guys.
Thank you, Andre, for your presentation, and welcome to the staff. I'm really impressed with the fact that we're getting far more involved in analyzing what we have, the lifecycle. It's gonna be far more beneficial to council to know a lot more and to, as you said in your presentation, to become a little more involved, too.
The left measure.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. We move now, but I can't read till I put these on. 5.3 Council Boards and Committees' Bylaw Review. Jonathan. Jonathan.
Thank you, worshiping council. Before you is a draft of the Boards and Committees' Bylaw. This bylaw was previously presented to council for review in May. We're bringing this bylaw back to you for you to provide more feedback on the bylaw and potential terms or references. If you are happy with the bylaw and the terms or references today, then we'll bring this back on October 5th for first, second, and third reading. And then following that meeting, we will start advertising vacancies for council's appointment on the October 26 organizational meeting. So some of the discussion points that occurred during the May meeting were the issues around live streaming, and then how can we best leverage those task forces to move council's strategic priorities forward? The other thing I know we wanted to discuss today, I understand the last week a motion was made to discuss Boards and Committees' reports and how we want them to go forward. So if council's in agreement, we can, at the end of this presentation, have that conversation. So as we discussed previously, I'll just do a brief overview of the bylaw. It's really separated into three different parts. We have the Boards and Committees' framework, we have committee procedures, and then we have a code of conduct for members. So with our new Boards and Committees' framework, we're recommending that we want to leverage those task forces and have fewer standing committees. This is actually one of those things that many communities are starting to do, have fewer standing committees and have more task forces. The reason being is that they can be very administratively heavy, take up a lot of resources to have those standing committees. So we want to make sure that going forward, that those task forces are tied to council's strategic priorities and have defined timelines and purposes as well. So since we already went through the bylaw ones, and I know it's getting a little late, I just thought I'd open the floor. If council has any questions about the bylaw specifically, I have the bylaw here, we can kind of flip to it and, and discuss whatever sections you have questions about.
Thank you, Jonathan. Councilor Langmaid?
Thank you, worship. I have just a few comments on this one tonight. My first kind of question is in 8.7, under membership, and that says, each committee shall have only one member of a family serving on it at one time to ensure that there is a diverse range of views and perspectives. I think that's a great idea. We don't need a whole family on a board, but could we please define family?
Oh, good idea, yeah.
You know, is it your wife, or is it your cousin, or, I mean, this is a small town, like, you could get your third cousin on a committee and... Well, I mean, technically, in some towns, that might be your wife. So that was my first question. My second question, on terms of appointment, just maybe to have some discussion or thought around competency-based requirements for committee members, and, and whether we kind of want to consider that and, and define what, you know, what kind of core competencies we'd be looking for. I, I see in the terms of reference, we, we start to do that a little bit, but I'm wondering if, if there might be value in taking that a little bit further, especially for things like the assessment board and things like that.
Sorry, so what section is that?
It, it's just Section 9. It's just, in general, a general comment is just kind of, we've touched in here on competency-based requirements, but could we maybe, is, is there value in looking at it further?
What is council's thoughts on us maybe making that, tying that in more with the terms of references to make them specific to each board and committee? Or would you want them to be, kind of have a general list of, of competencies?
I, I think there's even an opportunity to maybe include it in more of a general term, or just saying that, that, you know, competence, core competencies will be considered for appointments to, to rules. Just something general, saying that, you know, give us some, some wiggle room. We might not always have, you know, we might have a variety of volunteers that, that come to us, and, and it might not always be someone that, in our mind, is, you know, the perfect person. So some flexibility is needed, but maybe a reference to it. Just a thought there.
So just to interrupt, so we could put something, are you thinking of something like, appointments will be based, will set out priorities for each board and committee and, and kind of as a, as a decision-making matrix almost?
Absolutely. And it will change over time too, because as the, as, as the makeup of your committee changes, you know, the competency you'll need to, you might want to try and bring into the, into the committee might be different. And then, just a couple, so those were my two biggest ones. A couple of small ones, under Section 13, Electronic Communications, a committee may be conducted by means of electronic or other communications. Is that supposed to be a committee meeting may be conducted? Or can we have a totally online committee?
Committee meeting.
Okay. In Section 14.2, below that, I see that agendas must be sent to the town's Legislative Services Division no later than two days prior to a business, or prior to a meeting being held. Is that two calendar days or two business days? If you're having a meeting on Monday, do you want it to come in Friday night?
May I be fine with that? I check my emails then, but we will make it two business days. That's a good, good comment.
Just a suggestion to make sure that things aren't sliding, you know, because that'll happen. And then my last comments are on eligibility of members to be appointed to committees. This is kind of a callback to a conversation that we've had as a council before about whether we want, whether we want only residents on committees, or whether we can invite people from outside of town to join committees. Now, I know in the library board, the decision was, we want local. We don't want to appoint anyone to our library board who doesn't live in town. And I noticed in this document, we say that they must be residents or business owners of the town. So we could have, you know, non-residents, granted, business owners, but non-residents coming in onto committees. And I, I was just curious, maybe on, you know, maybe there's a purpose to why the two are different, or maybe is, what, what's the thoughts there?
Through your worship, I think the thought there is, in the event that we were to ever have an economic development committee or something along those lines, a downtown revitalization committee, something like that, we can open it up to anyone who's opening, who owns a business in that area. So we just want to have some flexibility in that case. In the terms of references, we would also spell that out a little bit clearer too. So for the most part, I think we do want to appoint residents, and if there's ever an event that we wanted to have a regional committee, we would probably go, probably have a different bylaw for those types of committees.
Okay. And then the final question I have is, I notice that a council member appointed to a committee, to a committee cannot vote, which is, I mean, that, that's a discussion to be had maybe, but that, not the question I have. The question I have is, it says you can't vote, but you can bring forward a motion? So you can bring forward a motion, but you can't vote on it? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. This would be a discussion, I think, would be between council right now. It goes, I think there's arguments on both sides, so I'd be really curious to see what council's perspective is on those.
I would too, if anyone has some thoughts they'd like to share.
Does anyone have any comments right now while it's up, while we're, while we've just discussed it as far as councillors voting on boards? Council Montgomery?
Yeah, having sat on like a few council committees, and so like, I, I was, I guess, around when the change went from being a voting member to a non-voting, I can, I can see why you wouldn't want council voting necessarily. Making a motion, I think, is probably not problematic, because, you know, it's up to the committee to, you know, vote it down or up. So I think it's cleaner to not have council voting, and I think it's kind of just like a, like a technical thing, whether they can put forward a motion or not. So I don't, I don't personally see a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that part? Then, are you okay?
I am concluded. That was my entire list. Thank you very much for everyone's patience.
Thank you. And I do have Council Montgomery followed by Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Jonathan. So I have a question about Schedule D, where it says multiculturalism committee.
Yeah.
Is that like a committee that we're forming?
So later on, I was going to get to the terms of references, and this is a question that came up in the past, so I just wanted to present it to council. Is this something that you guys would like to enact on October 5th? The issue with this, this kind of committee too, is probably, what, what would be the outcomes that council would want with this committee? There's some questions around it, so this would be just a discussion point for council for tonight, I think.
Yeah, and, and if I can elucidate?
Yes.
Thank you. I thought I'd try that one.
Try and elaborate.
Yes, I, I brought forward the, the concept of multiculturalism committee. I'm, I'm interested in the discussion as far as if that's the way we want to proceed, or keep proceeding the way we have been. There are other options that we can consider as a town. So that, I'm glad you have the terms of reference, it makes it much cleaner. So comments on, did you want comments on multiculturalism committee as a potential concept?
Can we discuss it after?
Sure.
Jonathan said we'd finish this.
Yeah, sure. Let's finish this then.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just point out, so you probably just were copying and pasting. It just says, under multiculturalism, it says the Community Improvement Program Committee, for example.
Sorry, my apologies.
No, that's okay.
Deputy Mayor Peterson?
I was just going to go back to Councilor Langmaid's comments about competency review. Council Wagner and I have been through a fairly exhaustive exercise in, in the provincial, provincially upcoming, provincially mandated, competency-based processes for boards with municipal appointments. And, and it was, it is a surprisingly elucidating process. It was, it was great, you know, it was, it was really useful. And I think that for the sake of, of, of operations, it would be a really good tool to utilize when you're just defining the terms of reference in terms of, of competency-based. I think it would be a really good tool to use. And the other thing that I was looking at was on page 142, Section 21. And, and that is with regards to what, what has also been earlier referenced regarding representing the town of Strathmore. And, and while I really agree with this, and I think that it's, that it's key, I also see opportunity for those committees versus task force, standing committees, ad hoc committees, all of those things being, having allowances to bring in people that would be useful to the process. So I think especially when we're dealing with our, our counterparts, you know, and I, I think in terms of the work that Council Wagner and I do with the lodge. And so the lodge has a much broader context than just the town. And one of the things that we often seek support in for those really important issues to, to our town is input from the broadest possible perspective. So this is something where people who will use this lodge in the immediate future and in decades to come are, many of them are not residents of this community, but they are all residents of our neighboring communities, or very likely. And so being able to have focus groups, or, or as you say, committees and task force, and being able to involve, to fold that into our IDP, or IEF, whatever we, ICFs, whatever we call them, you know, is a sort of a low-hanging fruit, that we can really involve ourselves with those other communities by getting those experts in community to bring information back to something like, like the lodge from a town perspective. So I don't know how that would look. I don't know if it, if it takes what you described as a separate bylaw, where, where we talk about additional orders or processes, or, or how that looks. But I, I do see potential and possibility for it, and, and just like for the library, you know, thinking about, you know, how they, how they might cater to programs outside of the community itself, and how that would look, you know, in an ad hoc committee for specific reasons, particularly related to fundraising, for instance. So anyway, just, just thinking about it out loud, your worship. And thank you, Jonathan.
So through your worship, would council then be agreeable if we were to change some of the terms for appointment to say, a resident of Strathmore, business owner, or unless otherwise specified in the terms of reference or something like that, just to give us a little bit more leeway? Yeah?
That sounds good. Council Wiley?
Thank you. I just have one question about this, and then some very general questions that I think we all want to discuss. So mine is 29.1, required training. Committee members must attend a training that is legislatively required, failure to do so, da, 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 da. I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is it to communicate to the legislatively required training? Is it the town's responsibility? Is it the chair of the committee? And does there need to be a record of this communication if the member risks losing, being deemed to have resigned if they don't, if they fail to do it?
Yeah, I think you, so through your worship, it would be our department, that would be the one that would communicate that with the appointee. So a good example would be the ARB or SDAB. There's legislative requirements for clerks and for members to get that specific training so they can sit on appeals. So we, we always are on the lookout for training when it's put on by the government or by different law firms. And then we're communicating with those members too. We have a list, a spreadsheet of, of who's was trained, when they were trained, and when they're going to be, to undergo more training, essentially. So I think the training lasts for three years.
And does there need to be a record of when you've told them that, hey, you got to get to this in the next three months?
Yeah, we keep those emails. It's all in our records management software, and we, we keep their application for the training, all that stuff. So it is something that we're, to be completely honest, we could do a better job of, I think, going forward, but we do keep track of, of who's been contacted for training, when they need to undergo training, and let them know also when, when they, where the trainings want to be, need to be redone, essentially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My other questions are as much for council as they are for administration. They're just generally about the remaining standing committees, and then, of course, the multicultural one. Are we ready to transition to that?
I think so. I, I have a similar line, and maybe mine will tie into yours, Jonathan. I'm comfortable with what you have here as far as your, your bylaw. My question is, and I've always been confused, and I'm, I'm assuming, maybe new councillors are confused too. Over the past several years, we've streamlined and done away with some committees, but we still have some committees, and it's never been fully explained to me where in this committees like the Chamber of Commerce fit in, Community Futures, like Handybus, why is it not listed here as one of our ones?
Those are external committees, that we have agreements with those nonprofits. So then with those agreements, we can appoint members to their boards.
So what is the difference between the library board and the Handybus board as far as its makeup and expectations?
We take ownership of those boards, essentially. The library board's not the cleanest example, because under their act, they're a corporation on their own. But, so the difference between, say, SDAB and the Handybus is that we have authority and we have a requirement under legislation to set out the terms of references, the terms for appointment, and those types of things with the Handybus, because we have an agreement in place, an MOU, I believe, with that one. We, and with that MOU, we asked for a membership to be on that board.
So there's nothing said in policy or bylaw that we have to be on the Handybus board, the Chamber of Commerce board, Community Futures, things like that?
Those are handled through separate agreements with those nonprofits.
Okay.
Those are their governing boards.
So I think you've just answered this, but just so it's crystal clear for me. So then these committees, the Assessment Review Board, the subdivision board, and then the Regional Emergency Board, there is legislation in place that we are required to have.
Yeah, and so we have, yeah, we have those. Yes, SDAB is under the act, ARB, those are for any appeals that may come from members of the public, whether they be over a development permit or an assessment. So we are required under legislation.
So those are non-negotiable standing committees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jonathan, I have a question, because I did sit on the Assessment Review Board, and they have a pool of individuals that are trained, and I actually did some for MD of Rocky View, for County of Wheatland, and different areas, rather than having your own people, because there's such limited amounts of assessment hearings. So it might save you on, because you have to pay for all the training, the mileage, everything.
Yeah, that's a very good point. Under our bylaw, I think, actually in the terms of reference, it lays out how much we pay for, for training. If it's a half-day session, they get X amount, full day, they get X amount. So there's something, I think we'd have a regional agreement that we're just wanting to kind of... to kind of firm up a little bit, to see if that is something that we can proceed with, but it's a good idea, for sure, to have a, a regional pool.
Council Wiley?
So then, uh, this question really is just for the rest of council. If we're considering bringing in a multicultural committee, and so that's back to Schedule D, um, I am afraid this steps on the toes of the Vault Cultural Collective, which, as we saw when they came in, has dozens of volunteers, and they're ready to hit the ground running. And under that umbrella organization, they are bringing in multicultural groups. So I'm wondering if there's, instead of creating our own standing committee, there's a way we could look at better working with them.
Just, just from my clarification, Council Wiley, um, the Vault Collective, are they, are they focused on arts and the various cultures in community? The, the reason I, the reason I had suggested this was we had done so much, we had done so much as council-to-council meetings and, and working with Sichika, uh, council, and during the discussions, we started to say, well, what about other cultures in the community? If, if we're addressing the concerns and worries of Sichika people in our community, and we're not paying any attention to other cultures who may be suffering similar, or maybe very, uh, different problems in our, in our community, um, is it, is it something that we would like to start some work on as well? So I'm not sure if the mandate of the Vault would be similar to what we were thinking of at that time regarding a possible multicultural committee, culturalism committee. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I follow that, your worship, and in our, our, um, longstanding work with Sichika, we've discussed this with them as well, in terms of, uh, of, um, developing, uh, sort of as a second step to, to the, uh, um, Strathmore-Sichika anti-racism, uh, work that we've done. But I think, I think that more than this is our, our community has grown, that there's a, there's, um, huge benefits just beyond the, um, you know, fostering awareness and understanding of our multicultural population at this point. I think that there's a, there's a, a need to really think about how, how, um, how our community can really work to attract, um, multicultural populations. And I, I think that, uh, that if we want to draw multicultural populations to our community, and we want to see our community continue to grow and thrive, there's some real, uh, benefits to initiating, facilitating discussion around existing and, and emerging issues, and, and, uh, you know, that's also talking about possibilities, it's, it's identifying barriers. I think that, um, implementing a multiculturalism strategy, uh, also relates to what Counselor Wiley talked about. I think that there's all kinds of opportunities to involve our school populations in this, to think about other institutions that exist within our community, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or, or, um, or our seniors, uh, uh, community. You know, how do we make this a community that people of all cultures, all races, all nationalities, that they want to come here? So it's in building a sustainable committee that we've, you know, that we foster that, uh, that capacity for multicultural diversity and, and, uh, and hopefully, um, build a, a stronger community through that.
And I guess if I can add, um, this, this concept of a multicultural, uh, committee to deal with is, to potential issues, um, you know, it would be things like hearing from a representative, uh, from the Filipino community. They might have some, some concepts, or some plans, or some concerns even, that would then come to this committee, and I could, whoever was on the committee could bring it back to council. Or, for example, I had a resident stop me at the flea market, uh, boot sale, was that what it was, basically? Anyway, he said that we have a Ukrainian couple, uh, who are here, uh, want, the husband is a, is a trained engineer, and his wife is a teacher, and they're trying to find employment, but their English, his English is, is quite low at this point. They're taking courses. So perhaps that would come to our committee, and we could, you know, we could brainstorm or come up with, uh, supports, or systems, or, um, things that they could do, help for them. Is, that's kind of what we were thinking about this, regarding this committee. Counselor Wiley, did you want to add anything, or ask any other questions?
Yeah, so when the Cultural Collective, and listen to their name, the Vault Cultural Collective came out, they, they had really paid attention, and they focused on this, they read our cultural and recreation plan, and they really stressed that they were trying to become the cultural umbrella organization that we talked about in that, in that plan. Also, I, I couldn't find it in here, but I'm sure it's in our strategic plan to support grassroots organizations. So it seems to me like we have this, like, vibrant, up-and-running group that's ready to go, and I know they're courting the Filipino community specifically as one. I know they're trying to outreach to Sichika, and this is something that they're super excited about, and then in comes government. And it seems like we're going to try and set up on our own, something that our community is already doing. I think it would definitely be worth talking to them and saying, like, so here's the mandate we're envisioning. Does this overlap with you? To what extent? Is this something you guys could take on? How can we support you? It just seems like we're trying to do something that's already exists with this huge community group.
I'd, I'd be more than willing to, to go into a holding pattern to see how things progress with the Vault, um, cultural aspect of that, of that, uh, organization. I, I would be absolutely fine with that, and as you said, if the grassroots can and wants to do something in their level, I'm, I'm all in, I'm all in as far as supporting them. So I'd be, I'd be more than willing to go into a holding pattern and, and see how things are.
And as for the education, um, Melissa and I are both on the library committee. That's something that the library would be very happy to get recommendations, to have people come in and, and work with them.
And to be clear, uh, we have a number of Ukrainian families already attending the library, and utilizing the sale program, uh, to work on their English as, uh, as a second language.
Good. Thank you. So, uh, everyone's comfortable with, uh, with that approach? No?
No.
You aren't, you are. You, you do, you are the other way. Okay. So I have, uh, Counselor Langmaid, and then Counselor, Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Thank you very much, your worship. Uh, I, I, I would not be in favor of, of, um, sending this off to the Vault Cultural Collective. With all, all respect and admiration for the work that they do in our community, I think the, the importance of making sure that we are listening to all of our residents, and that we are hearing, you know, cross-cultural concerns about our community, that to me is, is a key part of, of my role here on council, and, and, and it's making sure that, you know, even, even community members that are, are members of a much smaller cultural group still have representation at the table, and still have the ear of this council. And I think, um, well, uh, like I said, I, I do very much value the work that the Vault Cultural Collective is doing. I think that's a, a slightly different mandate. And for me, I, for me, what, it's really important that, that council take this on, that we own this, that this is something that we are dedicated to, that, that, that this council makes a commitment to, and that we are dedicated to making sure that this is, you know, we are, we are intentionally building communities. We are intentionally working within our community to identify how we can improve it for even the most marginalized person. And, and to that end, I, I, I think I would actually argue that this committee actually doesn't go far enough, um, by the given terms of reference. We have a multiculturalism committee, and in the mandate, it specifically says it's an inclusive community for all races, but you can have a culture that is not defined around race. And, uh, and there are, there are a number of them, you know, you, you think about different religious communities, religious cultures, um, you know, the Sikh community, uh, you have the, uh, the disabled community in town, uh, you have, uh, LGBT, the LGBTQ community, which, uh, is frequent, uh, frequently experiences marginalization, but isn't included in the terms of reference, um, for this potential committee. Um, I, I, I think it's, I think this is key to our work to anti-racism. I think establishing this committee under the auspices of, of this council, and, uh, you know, as, as a motion made by this council, and, and supported by this council, I, I, I think that supports, supports the work we do, and will support the relationship that we're working to build and continuing to build with Sichika, and all other communities, all other different cultures and cultural communities within Strathmore. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmaid. Um, Jonathan, from a procedural point, then, if there was enough, uh, interest on council to carry on with this multiculturalism committee, uh, would it then come forward at a later date, or would we, um, we wouldn't necessarily do it tonight, but we could have it added to another meeting? What, what's the best procedure forward if enough of council feel the way Counselor Langmaid feels?
So, um, thank you, your worship. Uh, we're going to be bringing this bylaw to the October 5th regular council meeting. In the meantime, if, uh, if it's the will of council, we probably need to create a policy to go with this terms of reference, for the reasons you just outlined. There's, um, probably actions that we would want to really set the terms out and the parameters of what this committee could and could not do. The goal would be to bring it on the 5th, that's the will of council, but it may be delayed a couple of weeks, depending on, depending on how the conversations around the administration of this committee would, would go.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we obviously would want to get it right if this is what council wants to do, so I don't think we're in a time crunch as far as this has to be done by October 5th, but we can definitely begin more discussions on it. Counselor Mitzner?
Uh, your worship, I'm sorry, Kevin just wants to chime in for a second.
Sorry, Kevin? Okay.
Okay, oh, thank you. Uh, I didn't mean to, to butt in here. Um, I mean, another option you have is, in the corporate business plan, we, we have a, um, diversity and inclusion, um, program or plan development. I mean, so an option is, you, you can amend a bylaw at any time, so, you know, what, I guess what I'm suggesting, one option is, we could do some more work on diversity and inclusion, and we could bring something back preliminarily, in, in short order, in the next couple of months, you know, probably before the year end. And that might help inform council about what direction you want to go in terms of a committee, and, and what its terms of references may be. Uh, that's just an option. Uh, I mean, it's just another thing on the table.
That sounds, uh, that sounds interesting. Counselor Mitzner, and then Deputy Mayor Peterson?
I believe that if council maintains, uh, an open concept, uh, to all, for all conversations and concerns with all residents, I don't think we need a separate committee. Where are you going to stop and start, and how many cultures and how many members are going to be on this committee? Thank you.
Well, as, as far as the number of members on the committee that would come up in the terms of reference, but, yeah, you know, and, and obviously you could be looking at a, a large variety of things to consider, um, and that's something we'd have to decide on as a council if we're, if we're going to go for this or not. Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. So, so I think that for me, uh, in, in terms of, of having the art, the Vault Cultural Collective, i- is, um, a part of it, but it's not the, maybe the essence of it. And when I think about the, um, the work that, the precursors to the Vault, I was very involved with the Wheatland Society of the Arts, and then sat on, as a council representative on what was Strathmore Regional Arts Committee. And, um, and I think that they have a part to play, a role to play, but they wouldn't be the vehicle that would, that would drive this. The people that have come to me about, about being interested in a multicultural, um, uh, committee, or, or, uh, standing committee, are, are the, um, are builders, they are developers, they are business people within the community that are looking for, um, the, the real economic spinoffs that come from having a, a very, very diverse community. And, and so if, if we want to stay exactly the way we are, then we wouldn't need to do anything. Then we could just stay the course and not have any committee, or we could put together a committee whose mandate it would be to, um, advise council and work with all of those, you know, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or, or whether it's, you know, the, the Vault Cultural Collective, all of those people that, that could lend themselves to, you know, builders and developers, to, uh, devising a process that would lend itself to this. And I think about cities that have used it so effectively in, in, in building a, a really strong foundation, uh, that, that relates to culture and economics, uh, communities like Langley, and Coquitlam, and, and, um, others in that, that I've looked at in terms of how they develop their multiculturalism program. And it has, it has enriched their cities. Chestamere is another really good example. And the committee work that they've done in terms of the diversity in their community has, has lent itself to, to unprecedented growth. So I think that having council review this, um, you know, not just from a arts perspective, not just from a race or ethnicity perspective, but from the broadest possible perspective as to how it will help to build our community and make our community stronger, better, and more attractive. I, I really think that there's benefit in, in moving this forward, and it's not something that we, that we necessarily own. It's something that we do from our governance perspective to help build this community. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Counselor Wiley, then Counselor Montgomery?
Well, I think we all agree, we want to make the community better, stronger, you know, those are all the goals of all of us. The question is, can government do a better job of it than the community itself? Like, how can we build an intentional community better than the community? So my question is, is how can we support the groups that currently exist, and, and let them, let them come up with the proposals? So take the Filipino society, which they have a Filipino society in town. Like, if any of them are watching this tonight, they're wondering, like, where have you been for us for all these years? How can you support us? But now we're talking about setting up our own committee. It's like, how are we outreach to them? So, and, and I would just go back to the Vault. I think that they, they, that is their goal, and that is their mandate, is to build a cultural collective, and not just an art gallery. The art gallery is almost like their storefront for their ambitions.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. I know in, in talking with, um, some of the representatives from the Filipino Association and other groups, um, they have been, to me, they've been quite excited that the town is willing to be at the head of this and to, to bring it forward. The, the feelings that have been given to me is, you, you guys, y- your town actually cares about our, uh, different cultures, and you're taking the lead on this. They're, the ones who've talked to me have said they're quite appreciative of that, so it's something that we can, and we'll talk again about procedure after this discussion, Jonathan. We can see where we might go with this, or how to best proceed. Uh, Counselor Montgomery?
Uh, thank you. I think we're, I think we're kind of premature right now to include this in the bylaw, um, simply because, like, there's, there's obviously some debate about whether it should be focused on culture, uh, whether it should be focused on, you know, some sort of, uh, race or, or skin tone aspect, uh, whether it should include, uh, you know, groups like LGBT, or, or other groups. So I think that we need to probably have a separate debate, and even just kind of a debate, and clarify what exactly we want this, you know, this committee to, to do. You know, is it going to be anti-racism? Is it going to be just cultural promotion? And, and we'll have to, I guess, yeah, so I, I think it's premature at this point to include it, uh, for the upcoming meeting anyways. And, and yeah, I look forward to the debate anyways when this comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. So Jonathan, again, what's our best path forward? And, and Kevin?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Just hearing the debate tonight, maybe the simplest thing to, would be to bring the bylaw without Schedule D to October 5th. That way we can start putting out some advertisements for the vacancies, and hopefully get people appointed for the October 26th organizational meeting. And then, when it comes to the multiculturalism committee and, and diversity work that we're doing, I think, I might not be the best person to ask on that. It'd probably be worthwhile to bring that whole potential program to a committee of the whole, to really kind of hash out what we want it to be, for reasons that you guys already stated. What, what are the parameters of the potential committee?
Would it be appropriate, then, if we're going to have it come back to a committee of the whole to discuss it in a full and fulsome, fulsome way? Would we make a, make an announcement, or, uh, something on, on our town's Facebook page to encourage people? to encourage people who may be interested in this committee to come forward and be a part of the gallery, the crowd in here, the attendees?
I guess, for what purpose? Would you want feedback?
Well, I guess I'd be looking for input from people as to what they might want, keeping in mind Counselor Langmaid and Deputy Mayor's comments, Counselor Wiley's comments. Everything I've heard tonight, Counselor Mitsner, we'd hear from the people that this potentially matters the most to. Maybe it's a survey. I don't know what it is, but we would definitely do well with a good, full discussion on this. Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you. I would have absolutely, any member of the public is always welcome to come join us at any of our meetings, obviously. I'm not sure that there's a reason to give this particular schedule any more or really less advertising than the others. Sometimes, and I'm thinking back to a previous council specifically on the prohibited business bylaw that was passed prior to my time on this council. I think sometimes acting in an overly cautious manner can invite, it can invite a community to be, to become involved in something that perhaps might not have been a concern for them previously. If, when we highlight, you know, I think it's important to understand the impact that council can have on a community by the perception of what we're bringing forward. And when we bring these items forward and we put an emphasis on one more than another or, you know, especially in terms of subjects like this, I think what you run the risk of doing is really just potentially poking some bears. And I think, as I said, well, I'm always happy to invite any member of the public in to become involved in what we do here in council chambers. I'm not sure that there's, I'm not sure I understand why this would require special advertisement. I'm not sure what, I mean, if we're looking for feedback on the terms of reference, sure. But if we're looking on feedback of whether or not we need this, you are opening, you're opening an invite for some terribly hateful feedback potentially. And I just want us to be cautious about that because we did see that happen in this community with previous bylaws.
I'm wondering if council would agree then to the concept that Jonathan presented that we look at passing the bylaw excluding this and that at a future council meeting, we have it come up as one item, multiculturalism committee, and we can fully discuss it and see if we want to progress with that committee. And then you guys can go back and try to figure out terms of reference, draft the bylaw or add an amendment to the bylaw to include it as a potential committee. Does that make sense to people?
And just to clarify, it's not that I don't want the public's feedback.
Yeah.
It's that I think the decision of whether or not we do this comes down to us as a council. And once we decide no work go, that's when I would really love to have the community come in and hear what they, you know, what do they want as an outcome should this committee be approved by council?
Jonathan and then Counselor Wiley?
Thank you, your worship. Just going back to your question, just now I understand where you're coming from. On our regular council meeting agendas, we do have a heading for public comments. So when this item does come back, members of the public are always welcome to speak to any item that's on the agenda. So at that moment, they could definitely provide their feedback as well. They have five minutes according to our procedure bylaw.
Okay, thank you. So I think from looking around, council seemed comfortable with passing the bylaw concerning all the other committees that we've discussed and then coming back to focus solely on the multiculturalism committee. Counselor Wiley?
Yeah, I just want to ask one request from administration then when they bring the discussion about the multicultural committee to us. I just want a little bit more information. I'm wondering if like, for example, when we were learning about the handy bus, weren't there some letters that came in supporting the handy bus, something like that? Is there a way that you guys could seek out some of the community groups like the Filipino society and just say, can you give us a letter? I don't know, like, or would you even do a delegate? I don't know, but just give us a sense of what it is you're looking for? Or are we opening a whole can of worms there? Like, it's just, that's the information I'd like. I'd like to hear from the Vault saying, actually, that's not really part of our mandate, but we would totally support this. Or other organizations that are already existing in town, just giving us a sense of like, does this meet their needs? I'd like to hear from them, maybe not a survey, but letters or...
Your worship, can I just respond to Counselor Wiley? When we were doing our strategic planning, Counselor Langmaid identified an issue, and you're going to maybe have to help me with this, but identified an issue in our last community-based survey that there was an underrepresented group. And so I think that's useful information too, to bring into that whole discussion, you know, to, because it does provide some database understanding. But I appreciate that, Counselor Wiley. I like that idea.
And if I could add something just for administration and Jonathan, maybe when this comes back to us, we should try to, I think it could be a long discussion. So I'm wondering if we could be cognizant of having it added to a light agenda for that night? If that makes sense? If we have a meeting that looks like it has a light agenda, there's no rush. Let's make sure that we can devote the time and get it right. Counselor Langmaid? Jonathan, do you have a fairly clear idea of where we're headed and what we're trying to do in a future meeting? And then the bylaw itself that deals with these boards and committees will come on October 5th, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have a couple amendments to do when we bring it back, but they seem pretty small, so definitely aim to bring it back on October 5th.
All right, thank you very much. So we can now move on to question and answer period. Anybody have any questions and answers?
I just have a brief question, your worship, for administration. Some time ago, you know, probably, and it might precede your time here, a group in the community came to ask about having access to water to flood their community-based pond. And I don't need an answer tonight, but I know that with winter approaching, that this will become an issue again and probably for some of our other ponds. And I know Mark is intensely aware of this, but just, you know, for a discussion at a future date. And I think it fits into some of the other planning that you've been doing and the community probably looking for an update. But I don't need an answer tonight at all. And the second thing, your worship, if I might have your indulgence?
I'm sorry.
The second thing is, no, I have two things. The second thing is that it's come to my attention that the Legion, Strathmore Legion Number 10 Ladies Auxiliary is going to be celebrating their 75th anniversary. And I was, I don't know what they have planned or if they have any huge events planned. But I was thinking that maybe our comms could reach out to them just in terms of bringing to the attention of the community all the great things that that committee does. They're very understated in the work that they do, but they do a tremendous amount of work in our community. And I just thought it'd be just a really nice shout out on their 75th anniversary to be able to recognize the extraordinary contribution they've made for 75 years and I'm sure will continue to make. And that's all I have, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So at this time, we're looking for a motion to go in camera to have the CIO council dialogue. Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to move the council move in camera to discuss an item related to Section 241A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act at 9:00 PM.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor. Motion is carried and...